Just ask you, reach out to Q and his team and if someone's having an issue getting access, let us know and we'll take care of it, okay?
Okay, thanks. And finally, the last thing is that you all agreed when we had the investigation done, and I'm so thankful, Chief kept his word. So I come to you all. So my next door neighbor is one of those people that I mentioned to you guys that has deserved of an apology for what has happened. She's not been on her porch since and she's now in the hospital. And so she's watching, Ms. Tula's not able to be here, Mr. Jean, and I'm just asking you all and especially you, Mr. Manager, because at that meeting, that was not an apology. Whenever someone apologizes and says but or if you feel, you guys know, like that does not, that's not an apology. And so I want to give you guys as leaders to honor your word and to be able to look at that screen and address Ms. Polly, address Ms. Tula, and address Ms. Gloria. These people are well into their late eighties, early nineties, aren't physically able to get here and they definitely couldn't physically get to, you know, to the meeting. And so I just called us to do the right thing, to do what we said we would do. And that is you all said that you would apologize for what they experienced and that has not happened. And I think you definitely owe them an apology as well, Mr. City Manager, because this all took place on your watch. And it's not only just the Chief that needed to apologize. Everyone said that they would apologize after the investigation was done. And so I just ask you guys to honor your word.
No, I'm happy to start and say that no one should ever feel like they can't sit out in front of their home, in their private residence and...
Her name's Ms. Polly.
Yeah, to the multiple people that happened to Ms. Polly and everyone else. Again, I think we, you know, the events of that evening were not perfect and we regret that they felt unwelcome in their own home. And I hope that, I'm sure will never be repeated again. And I think you've seen that we've dealt with this in, I think, as transparent and direct a fashion and my compliments to the Chief in going as far as hiring an outside resource to come in and review our patterns of practice and make sure, assess what we could do better. And I think, I think we've done honor to what we committed to doing and I think the manager, I commend the manager and the Chief for going as we had asked to the community and having direct conversation and making sure people understood what we did, how we tried to correct the situation and what we learned from that experience.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I can certainly provide an update to that. Certainly, the day that the results were presented at the CSE, there was an apology. There were no buts or ifs. There was a straight apology. Yesterday, the Chief and I walked Lee Park condos, visited some homeowners, some residents were not home that we knocked, but we did get to talk to a few other residents. So that was started, that was yesterday, and we intend to visit those that were not home for whatever reason and continue that.
She's in the hospital, just so you guys know. South Miami Hospital, it'd be nice to let her know because she is fearful and she deserves...
We met with some residents.
Yeah, but I'm saying the main one.
No, we're not done yet.
I think...
She's in the hospital, she had a stroke, so I just...
Understood, I just can't allow, I just don't want to have the back and forth, Ms. Wells. I mean, again...
It's tough when someone lies to me like straight in my face.
I don't, I don't think, okay.
I heard it, like and others heard it. I know what if sounds like and I know what a but sounds like because I brought it up in the meeting at that time. And so he's doubling down and still not doing it. And the lady has had a stroke. We don't even know if she would make it through the week, but we do know that she's watching. It's not hard to simply say, I apologize, Ms. Polly, you're free to sit on your porch again if you get out of the hospital.
I just did, hopefully she heard me, so...
It's not just you though, like...
I think I've been clear, Ms. Wells, we went yesterday, started having those meetings with residents, we sat, went into living rooms, provided those apologies. We're not done yet, other residents were not home and will continue to do so. I just, you may not be aware of that, I just wanted to give you that update.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that closes public remarks, let's get back to regular items on the agenda. Why don't we pick up the presentations again and let's start with E1, which is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. So, Mr. Director, Team McKinley-Horn, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Ms. Michelle Latte is here from McKinley-Horn, she's a landscape architect and she's part of the McKinley-Horn team, working with Hatley Peterson, the park planner and project manager. She's going to give an update on the last 60 days of accomplishments and a look ahead. Michelle.
Again, Mr. Director, how much time for the presentation? Because I just want to see if we manage the time we have before we need to extend, so... Okay, so 10 minutes would be great, okay? And we'll try to keep it to five minutes of questions on our side, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much for your time today. As Quentin mentioned, I'm going to give a brief summary of our progress so far with Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, as many of you may remember, this is a project timeline that we presented to Commission and with our engagement being the core of our approach and reflected our project timeline. Our 10-month process allows for iterative communication with the City Commission while also providing an ample time for integrating resident feedback and technical expertise. We kicked off the project for month one around May 20th, so we are right now on month three. Our kickoff was really a three-pronged approach. First, we visited all city parks and facilities to collect data across 40 different measurements that you can see on the right-hand side. While we're still working on that full assessment, we're excited to say that there are no parks that are below expectation across the six categories evaluated. More information about that, it's coming soon to you all. Additionally, we met with city staff for the kickoff and dove into topics like you see here in the screen. You have a strong and capable staff that are looking forward to providing more operations, maintenance and programming recommendations for them. Finally, as you're all aware, we also held individual one-on-one, listening to sessions with all the City Commissioners and heard a lot of consensus around prioritizing access and connectivity to existing parks, balancing programming and capital investment and ensuring all residents are aware of the existing parks and facilities. So for branding and marketing, in addition to our kickoff and the technical side of the project, we also worked hand-in-hand with your communications team to kick off the project branding and marketing. You may have seen an A-frame, signs around the town or flyers at the community center. Our project website had a toolkit that anyone can download and share with their network, including project frequently asked questions, a fact sheet, social media posts and ample content. Feel free to share these with your neighbors, friends and constituents if you haven't already. Diving deeper into the engagement, we also launched Statistically Valid Survey, which is available via this QR code. It is available in English and Spanish through all the months of August. Mail to postcard went into over 15,000 addresses in South Miami and a second mailer will be delivered this week. We have so far over 200 responses as of mid-July. As you may know, because our team, so many of you, we were able to attend the 4th of July event at Palmer Park. While the weather was not perfect, we were still able to hand over 400 project cards and heard from residents. Residents expressed their gratefulness for us seeing the consultants engage with them and inform them of the project and the update of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We now completed our third of three virtual focus groups last night. These groups were made up of very active and informed residents, which this city has a lot of. So thank you for encouraging your board members, neighbors and residents to engage with this process. We will be holding an in-person focus group with Miami-Dade Public Schools in August, in early August, and are looking forward to the opportunities that that will bring around joint use for the three of your parks. Demographics and Development Review. Document helping us better understand the residents, the trends impacting our parks and facilities and how we can best move forward to meet the needs of the residents. Investing in diverse programming options may be an opportunity to explore. We also keep in mind the impact that new housing and development will have in our facilities, like redeveloping Sunset Place and City Hall. Past Plans and Documents Review. We have been working to understand ongoing and past initiatives by the county and South Miami to ensure goals and objectives are aligned. Documents such as the Miami-Dade Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, the Waterfront Recreation Access Plan and Conservation Plan were all reviewed to ensure the efforts were aligned with the city's own comprehensive plan, intermodal plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Aligning these plans will help us better connect our parks via Blueways, Trailways and through the intergovernmental coordination. Comparative Benchmark Memo. This exercise helped us understand how South Miami compares to neighborhood jurisdictions. We chose to look at Pine Crest, Cutler Bay and Col Gables. We find, we found that we exceed our neighbors in level of service, or providing four acres of parkland per 1,000 residents, where our neighbors aim for three every 1,000. We have a healthy target of every resident being within...
Try, Michelle, just a question on that, are we actually meeting that level of service or is that our goal?
We found that we exceed the level of service, we're meeting it.
Okay, today?
Yes. Where our neighbors aim for three every 1,000. We have a healthy target of every resident being within a 10-minute walk of a park. We invest in our parks similar to our neighbors and we do an exceptional capturing revenue from park system over a revenue per capita rate of $93.58. Our next exercise will dive deeper into level of service through geospatial analysis to ensure we're measuring level of service appropriately. We're looking at other benchmarks such as quality of experience and access. As I mentioned, we have an upcoming in-person focus group with the school district on how we can coordinate these schools to better integrate the facilities into our community and maximize as much available land as possible. Thank you. So for the Palmer Park Concept Plan, we started day one of the master plan by gathering information from the city staff for preferred programming and amenities for the park. Also performed site visits with the city to better understand and analyze the existing use, adjacent uses and constraints. We have since then provided seven conceptual layouts for potential organization scheme and programming for the park. These options are now in the process of being evaluated more in-depth to define a clear path for our final concept approach. We are just at the start of this journey, so please join us on August 26th here in this room to listen to residents and learn more about the needs, priorities and visions for the park and recreational system. Thank you.
August 26th, where's the location, Michelle?
Here, City Hall.
Here at City Hall. At the time, one more time for the record?
6:30 PM.
6:30 PM, so 6:30 PM here, August 26th. Colleagues, any questions of the team? No? Mr. Kai, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay, thank you for the presentation, the update.
Thank you so much.
Next up...
I did have a question.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. On the survey, my wife did the survey, she had a question about it. You said you have, we have 200 responses already, over?
Over 200 responses as of mid-July that we checked.
Is there a metric or a number that we want to get to?
As discussing with Quentin, we have a very high goal that we're trying to achieve of 1,000. It may seem like a lot, but we will make the effort. We still have a full month open, so our target will be 1,000 hopefully.
The survey's done through our platform or is that a platform you guys are servicing? On the survey?
The survey can be accessed through the City of Miami website.
No, but the backend, all the analytics and data, is that something that you see on your end or goes through our city?
I don't know if you have access, but we have access.
McKinley-Horn is using a third-party Poco statistics or something like that? And all the statistics are going on their end and they have shared with us.
So just a matter of feedback, just see if people are starting the survey and they just stop. To my, my feeling is that it's a little long and we're not getting all the way, all the way through and finishing the survey, so just be conscious of that because it is pretty long, so just be, just have an understanding.
It's the first thing my wife said to me as well, so, did the survey, extremely long and I just started playing with it now since you had the QR code up and it is a very long instrument.
It is 18 minutes long if you wanted to fill each one of the items.
That's longer...
Yeah, it's pretty long.
That's longer than a live poll, with someone actually walking through a series of prompts and it's hard to get consistent participation with an instrument that long and without any sort of guided assistance. So I tell you, you need to think about cutting it in half if you want to get to that 1,000 response rate.
Yeah, and for anybody that would like to respond and is not interested in responding to each of the items, not responding to something won't hold you, won't hold you from submitting, so you can respond to what matters to you too, but we will evaluate, of course, making it shorter or what ways can we done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question, Commissioner. Okay, let's move on to the plus survey update. Mr. Wierett, if you're here, I think he may have stepped out, if not, we will, he just got skipped and we're going to go to the Miller Legge presentation on the Landscape Master Plan, so...
Hi, hello everybody, thanks for having us.
Good evening.
Miguel Calle with Miller Legge and this is Jenny Zakowski, so I'm landscape architect, certified arborist, and Jenny's a landscape designer with our company. And we're here to just run through the progress we've made on the South Miami Landscape Master Plan. So we'll go ahead and start, yes? So first thing I wanted to go through was our scope of work and essentially what this Landscape Master Plan is going to do. And what it does is it develops a comprehensive Landscape Master Plan for major roadway corridors throughout the city of South Miami. It supports the city vision, mission, values and strategic goals. Identifies opportunities and constraints to guide future improvements, which includes gateway entrances, key intersections and public rights of way. It aims to improve aesthetics, pedestrian comfort and community character with a focus on resiliency, sustainability, identity and enhancement of the tree canopy coverage. It delivers conceptual planting guidelines and policy recommendations and produces a roadmap for the future with clear measurable strategies to support implementation. So of these seven planning processes, steps, we are currently in the, in the one highlighted with the red circle, so we're at the opportunities and constraints analysis. So we just went through the mission, vision and objectives and we're going to take a look at some of the existing conditions inventory that we've conducted thus far. So a little bit about South Miami originally was six square miles and that kind of changed in the 1930s with some lawsuits from the residents, which the city, I guess, sold some parcels and ended up, you know, reducing down to about 2.1 square miles, I believe. And, you know, through some of the surveys that we're showing here, this is Miami-Dade County Urban Tree Canopy Assessment from 2021, and these graphics essentially are showing the loss of canopy coverage throughout Miami-Dade County and that includes the city of South Miami. So the graphics on the left kind of, you know, gives you an idea of the green coverage that was there. The center graphic compares what those numbers were between 2016 and 2021. City of South Miami is kind of towards the top, but you can see it's in red, meaning there was a canopy loss there. And the graphic on the right kind of supports that with South Miami being in red. So we're going to go through some of our existing conditions now. And the data we're looking at here came from the South Miami Complete Street Policies Design Manual, which was provided in 2016. And we're breaking down our corridor classifications and... Starting with our principal arterials and then we have our minor arterials and our collector roads, moving down to our local streets, key intersections and our gateways. I will first point out that the map in north is to the right and we did this to fit it a little better in the presentation and make it a little bit more visible. So what we're looking at here are principal arterial roads, the main one shown here is US1. And we also have Bird Road on the north side. And to accompany the map, we have some images of the existing conditions at the bottom. Not all of them are looking great, but that's what we're here for. So moving on to our minor arterials, we have focused on Sunset Drive, Red Road and 67th Avenue. So this graphic is showing our focus area and for all of the maps moving forward, our focus areas are essentially, they're taking a sample, basically a diverse sample of the conditions that can be found throughout that type of roadway classification. So in this case, for the, for the minor arterials, we're looking at Red Road and we're going to use that as the focus road. For our collector streets, we have 62nd Ave, Southwest 40th, Southwest 57th, Miller Drive, Southwest 64th Street and Southwest 8th Street. And this one, our focus streets are going to be Southwest 62nd Ave and Southwest 64th Street. This map shows all the local streets, all in purple and we'll be focusing on Southwest 62nd Ave, Southwest 63rd Court and Southwest 68th Street. Next map we have are key intersections, so...
So for the key intersections, we are looking at, if you go to the next one, Miguel, we're looking at our focus area being US1 and Red Road. So that is the key intersection that we're focusing on there and then you can see same thing, existing conditions in the bottom pictures of what that intersection looks like. So from there, we looked at gateways. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the ones that we are choosing as our focus areas, again, pinpointing, you know, gateways that we see that are representative of some of the overall conditions within the city, you know, namely ones that, again, where are the intersections with the principal arterials, the main roads, and that's what we're looking at for our gateways. Existing hardscape conditions, so basically we just took a look at, you know, what are some of the existing hardscape types within the city? We have paver conditions and then you see the pink concrete. If you go to the next slide, you'll see inventory photos that we took of, you know, some of those of what that looks like, of the hardscape conditions throughout the city. And you can see it is pretty mixed, yeah.
Just a quick point out, you can see how concentrated the current hardscape areas are. So we also came up with a general tree list, tree inventory of some of the species that you're found throughout the city of South Miami. Again, this is just a small sample of what's out there and not a complete list. They include canopy trees, palms, shrubs, ground covers, native and Florida-friendly varieties. And I'm going to let Jenny continue with the opportunities and constraints analysis.
Thank you, Miguel. All right, so after gathering data about the existing conditions in the city, we analyzed factors that would represent opportunities for improvement and ultimately constraints to the recommended improvements, right? So if we look at the current important destinations within the city, the city's parks, schools, the hometown district and the hospital district, it's important to recognize that these are locations throughout the city that we need to be aware of when it comes to proposing guidelines for shade canopy improvements, right? AKA, where do people go in the city and how can we improve the experience of people getting to those areas, which leads to the next map, which is looking at the existing paved paths for cyclists, bike lanes, existing bike lanes and buffered bike lanes based on, and this data was based on the South Miami Intermodal Transportation Plan. And what this tells us is that currently the safest zones for cyclists within the city are along the US1 paved path and a small portion of Southwest 64th Street does provide a buffered bike lane. And when it comes to pedestrian weight finding, you'll find that it's concentrated, again, as same with the hardscape within a small portion of the city, which is, you know, encompassing the hometown district. And then we're also looking at the future Ludlum Corridor to the west, right? So with the destinations and existing bike routes in mind, we analyzed the solar intensity of the streets within the city through on-the-ground field reconnaissance and visual analysis of aerial imagery. We estimated approximate canopy coverage percentages. So as you can see, a lot of the lower solar intensity streets are within the residential zones in yellow. And then as you move closer to the core where the hometown district is and you get more of that impervious hardscape and it increases, you'll start to see more medium and higher intensity streets, more of those, the red and the orange. And you can feel this too as you walk and bike throughout the city, which I'm sure many of us here have. And it's important because it gives us a critical component to work with when we talk about which areas, which streets in the city we want to improve, right? So taking a look at hardscape improvements and opportunities, we also looked at potential areas for hardscape improvements within the city represented by the orange squares and these areas are in line with, again, we showed before, the key intersections and gateways that we went over earlier in the inventory portion. So, you know, intersections of principal arterials, minors and collectors. And from this you can see that a lot of the existing hardscape types are concentrated, again, same thing in that small port, small portion of the area near hometown district and the heart of Somi, but with the goal of this master plan, we want to unify the city as a whole by tying in other areas of the city and really making a statement that tells someone you're in South Miami, right? So another important component in evaluating improvements and constraints is understanding street jurisdiction. This really just influences the level of coordination required depending on if the street belongs to the city, state or county. And then finally, for analysis, we looked at major power lines, which this is definitely a constraint as they limit the species and types of trees that can be planted in adjacent areas because it reduces the potential for canopy coverage wherever you have those huge transmission lines. And again, we know with this map, there are other existing power lines within the city and the residential areas, these are just kind of the bigger main ones, right? So that is a constraint because it might be that only smaller trees and palms could be used, where you have those big transmission lines and this could result in less shade than might otherwise be desired, again, tying it back to that constraint, right? So that was our analysis.
So moving forward, we have some design guidelines that we're going to follow to continue with the analysis. We have a couple of graphics. Sorry.
Thank you.
That's better? All right. So moving forward, we have some design guidelines that we're going to follow and these kind of reinforce what Jenny was just stating. On the right, we have a graphic from FPNL, which is Right Tree, Right Place. So again, next to those transmission lines and overhead power lines, we are going to be limited with overhead canopy, which would affect the overall coverage that we could get in these areas. On the left-hand side is something we want to consider since a lot of the improvements are going to be within the right-of-way, we want to make sure that we have clear lines of sight and visibility. To achieve this, we're going to keep the lower plant material, ground covers at about 18 inches in height and from that 18 inches up to about eight feet. We want to have a clear area and that would be to the bottom of any palms or trees that are located within the medians. We also want to take this into consideration within the swale areas of the roadways as well. Again, just reinforcing some of the things that we would be looking at. This graphic here shows the spacing between the trees and this is determined by speed. So as speed increases on the road, that design speed will determine the space between the trees to maintain that safe visibility. Here are some guidelines that we would use in terms of planting new material.
Sorry, if you can just, that last standard, does that imply that trees in the center median or trees on the east side of the right-of-way?
It would be in both situations. So it would be the swale areas on the sides of the road that could be affected.
It's a big gap between trees on, on, yeah.
Again, that's dependent on the design speed, so where you have lower design speeds, the gaps might not need to be quite as big. But those were the charts on the, on the right-hand side would kind of explain what those...
And are we required to follow these standards per FDOT or county?
These are DOT standards, so we look at implementing something similar on all roadways just to make sure we are maintaining some sort of safety.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
So if I'm reading this correctly, then if the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, the trees are supposed to be 25 feet apart?
That is if it's in a line of sight. So if there are no intersections or no trees, or sorry, no cars are trying to turn, if a car is turning into a major roadway, you want to make sure that car has a clear line of sight to any oncoming vehicles in either direction, as well as any pedestrians or bicyclists that could be coming as well. So within that zone, yes, the trees would need to have that spacing based on that criteria. So within that zone, yes, the trees would need to have that spacing based on that criteria to maintain clear visibility. If there, if there are no cross streets, if they're just making a right turn, obviously there's not that issue.
So, on a street like Miller, if you're coming from 67 to 62, where the average street, let's say, has four houses on it, speed limit is 35, you're talking about, you could have two trees on each block.
Again, it depends on the location. For instance, if there are intersections with traffic lights, none of this applies.
But if there's stop signs?
Stop signs.
Between 67 and 62, there's only stop signs.
Stop signs, again, where stop signs are, you know, it's just, when you're at that stop sign, before you go, you want to make sure that there's some visibility out there. So most of the time at the intersections, there's more room than more, you know, plenty ample room to, to avoid this situation. This applies more on your heavily trafficked roads, this is where it's going to be more of a concern.
Okay.
Some of the planting guidelines we have here, just to kind of outline when new material is being installed, some of the conditions that we would look at in terms of plant spacing, how it's properly braced and implanted, or planted into the ground, and preparation of the soil beforehand. For the hardscape improvements, we have a couple of samples here in terms of how this could be applied throughout the city. City of Miami Beach and Coral Gables, they have standard concrete colors throughout the entire city. You know, in terms of cost, I don't know if that's going to be a benefit to the City of South Miami, but we could look at, you know, key intersections, which we've shown before, gateways as points of interest that we can implement some of this. Some of the samples we have here on the bottom left is your standard sock, salt rock finish. And moving towards the right, we have some glass aggregates that have been added to concrete, and then the surface kind of washed away to expose that color. And on the very right are pavers, which can be easily installed anywhere. These in particular have a glue, a blue glass aggregate. Again, these could be at key intersections, at certain gateways, at points when you enter the city, so that we can provide some separation and give the city some identity.
And I'm sorry, those are, those are, that's what you're recommending by way of style and design?
No.
Those are just examples of what?
Those are just examples of what could be in terms of adding some color, some design, and not going throughout the entire city with, say, one-colored concrete or something like that. These are just some ideas and some options that we're proposing.
Okay.
And then we have our proposed plant palette. A lot of these are native and Florida-friendly materials.
We're doing this twice.
So, these are being chosen because of their hardiness, they're obviously native, so they're adapted to the weather conditions here. They're going to help minimize the consumption of water, fertilizer, reduce maintenance, they'll capture rainwater, which helps with storm, storm runoff.
Excuse, so, sorry to interrupt you. I just have a quick question, because I'm trying to grasp. So, these design requirements and recommendations, these are for the residential neighborhoods? This is for the entire city? This is, what is, what is?
This is the palette of tree species that they're recommending for, I'm assuming they'll have recommendations for specific deployments at different locations.
I'm asking for a reason, because Placerbia is recommending certain trees for certain locations, and now you're recommending trees for the same locations, or just residential?
Citywide.
These aren't location-specific, so this is just a general palette for the city.
Correct.
We've had discussions with Placerbia, and we're working with them in terms of what they're doing on their project. And what we're trying to do, not only with them, but other, other firms that are working throughout the city, is try to coordinate our palettes, our plant palettes, so we're using similar material. You know, obviously, there, there can be some difference between, you know, one area to the next, but overall, we want to try and keep a similar theme.
Okay. So, yeah, that, that's where I was trying to get at.
Sure.
You guys are coordinating as far as what trees and all that to be using? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's tons of trees out there, there's tons of natives, so, you know, obviously, there, there can be some variety, but the idea is, and I think everybody can be in agreement, a majority of the plants that we're going to want to use are going to be native and Florida-friendly, for some of the reasons that I've mentioned already, in terms of being resistant to storm events, you know, minimizing the water consumption because they're adapted to, you know, drier conditions. We are also providing some species that thrive in wetter conditions, because there are some low-lying areas where maybe those could be used. You know, large canopy trees, small canopy trees, for those areas where, you know, we have space, and for those areas where, where adjacent to power lines, and we may have, you know, limited space to only plant small trees. So, these are just some.
Okay.
Just a sampling, this is not our limited-only palette, but...
Understood. And last question, you, you said these are the, so, some design require, some requirements, basically, design?
Design guidelines.
Design guidelines.
Yeah.
So that's, so if someone's building a new home, basically, this will be adopted by our, our building department for certain trees that would have to go in certain neighborhoods that you deem those are the best trees for that location?
So, we haven't gotten to that point yet, that is part of our study later on, where we will look at the current requirements that the city has within their code, and we're going to take a look at that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Do you have a question, or is it the comment? I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I just want us to remember where we started, because the mayor and I had a conversation, which is where this whole thing was born, where we were just planting things willy-nilly, as we, you know, oh, we have this shrub, we're going to plant it in this traffic circle, and then we had stuff here, there, and everywhere where there was not cohesive. And we said, look at other cities where they have a cohesive planting schedule. Somehow, we've ended up here, and, and I'm not sure, we're looking to see where we end up, but the, the, the original plan was that we would have, like, for lack of the right word, like a booklet that would say, in our traffic circles...
So, I think, I think if we, I think if, yeah, so I think that's where they're getting to? What they're, what they're showing us is the materiality, that there are the options?
Exactly, no, but I'm just saying it for the benefit of all of us.
For better, for better, okay, got it.
Yeah, well, I was in here when you made the first presentation, so...
Got it. Yeah, so you'll, we get further down the presentation, you'll see that they'll identify the different areas where some of these species could be used, but, sorry.
Well, in, in this case, you know, here are some of the palm species that we were looking at. Again, some of the lower ground covers and shrubs, grasses, again, emphasizing native Florida-friendly varieties. And all of this comes with consideration of the adjacent projects, so the underlying along US-1, and some of the existing conditions that are out there already. And essentially, that's where we're at at this point.
So in terms of timeline, how long before we start to see the combination of these, the materials that you're suggesting?
So...
Right, with specific applications to the point that Commissioner Boniz was mentioning?
So, our project focuses within the right-of-way, so we're not going to really get into, like, residential areas or parks and that sort of thing. We are keeping those in mind, because obviously, the right-of-way connect all of those, so we'll, you know, see how we can make those connections happen. Obviously, a park right off one of the major roadways makes it easy, a park kind of isolated with...
I'm, I'm talking about some of the focal intersections that you mentioned, a typical traffic circle condition, you know?
So that's in our, in our next phase, so this is all the existing stuff that we've already inventoried. It's our analysis of what we inventoried, and our next phase is going to start looking at to, start looking at how we can make the improvements, where the opportunities are to, say, you know, maybe widen the street, add an extra bike lane, provide dedicated bike lanes, more canopy coverage, and, and that's what our next phase is going to be.
Good. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, the bike lane thing is new to me.
It's new to me too, yeah.
So I'm sure, that's why you're, you're saying that, but I, I, I think what we, you know, Mr. Manager of the scope, that I'm, what I believe we had released was, we're trying to come up with standards for a variety of conditions in the right-of-way, or right-of-way-related improvements, so I, I don't, I think we're on the same page with respect to that, I think the bike lanes is the only thing you said that kind of threw me off.
Well, that's part of the, part of the right-of-way, there, there are existing bike conditions.
Well, there are existing bike conditions, okay, okay. So we're not talking, no, we said adding bike lanes, that's why, okay.
Improving, you know, improving some.
Improving the existing?
Correct.
Okay.
And that includes, that's part of the canopy coverage, because you have bike users, you have pedestrians, so all of which, you know, the goal is to make it easy for them to walk and bike and use roadways to get to different parts of the city.
Perfect, okay. And then, I think, is, the question from the left, to my left, will be, the timing of that next phase?
Thank you.
What is the, what's the next phase look like in terms of timing?
Can you, can you pull up the report, the presentation, because I think you had a slide, I just want to make sure we can go, walk through that real quick.
On, in terms of the timeline?
Yeah.
So, we, the end goal, we're looking around December, so I would say for the next phase, we're probably about four to six weeks away.
That's conceptual landscape?
Yeah.
And then, go back. And then draft landscape will take how long?
Um, that is probably going to, because...
I'm most interested in when we get to the last circle, which is the maintenance standards and guidelines, because that's the one we can, that's when we can start executing against all the beautiful pictures that I see here, so...
No, 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 the, the, the mayor knows, the orange, orange one's more important. When do we get to the orange one?
Now, the orange is the booklet I just sit on the shelf, the, the last one is the one that tells our team what they can, what they can do, yeah.
Yeah, the, the maintenance standards is actually going to come after the master plan is complete, because that will kind of set up the, the framework that we can then go by to implement the, the maintenance standards and such.
Okay, so, so, again, when I hear maintenance standards and guidelines, I'm assuming you're talking about typical conditions for a traffic circle, to keep using that example.
Yes, we're going to look through, you know, the existing...
Does that come in the, in the orange circle, or in the, or in the, the brown circle? What?
That's the brown circle, the brown circle's after the orange.
So that's the circle I care about, I think the circle that my colleague, Commissioner Boniz cares about, so, when do we get to the brown circle, to keep it simple?
Mayor, I, I, I just want to clarify that, because, you know, make sure we're speaking the same language. When I see maintenance standards is, how do we maintain what we have put in the ground, right? And I think you want to know when we're putting stuff in the ground.
No, I want to know, no, we want to know what we're putting. What and when, yes. What and how and when.
So I, I just want to make sure we're answering that question, when will we have a playbook that will allow us to start putting things in the ground, of which we've waited because we didn't want to?
Correct.
Be in a disjointed, that was what Commissioner Boniz was talking about, so I, I want to make sure we answer that question. When will we be ready to, to, to plant material? Because I view maintenance as, how do we maintain what we have? And if I'm wrong, please correct me on the fly.
Well, again, the, the guidelines are part of that, so we're not telling you exactly what to, what to plant, it's going to be a set of guidelines with options, so for instance, you would have, sorry, you would have a...
So I'm going to give you an example. So we have very typical conditions, we have traffic circles with a manhole in the center, which my understanding limits our ability to have is specimentary, to kind of anchor that landscaping, right? So, I'm, I'm assuming we're going to have a standard condition for, a standard guideline for planting and enhancing the aesthetic of that traffic circle. That's what I hope to see in the brown circle, right? Is that, is that a product that we will have that we can apply? You know, we have more than a handful of those conditions, I'm assuming we'll have like a standard design?
Correct.
With, with a standard complement of, of trees and shrubs that we can, we can execute at that location, and then you'll develop maintenance standards, so that actually what we invest will be able to?
To maintain, correct.
Persist, correct, okay. So, again, when does that product get delivered?
So, this next phase, so the next four to six weeks, that's where we're looking at some of the different conditions, and we'll be showing how we can, you know, enhance those, okay? Traffic circles, specific roadways, all of that will be in the next four to six weeks.
Okay.
After that, we will have the, the master plan, the language, the booklet, all the stuff that goes along with it. Once that gets approved and finalized, then we will start taking a look at the maintenance and guidelines portion of it, which includes the, the written code. So we'll review that to see what improvements we can make in terms of the standards that are existing now.
Okay, but those are written code, written code for what? I'm sorry, for private applicants, or written, or?
There, there was a conversation about also extending that sort of advice as it relates to development, and if we wanted to apply some guidelines.
Okay.
I think it was to Commissioner Rodriguez's point earlier in question, which, that wasn't what he was alluding to at the time.
Yeah.
But I think he said that's further along, and so, yeah, we wanted to maybe share a little bit of...
Yeah, I mean, a quick example, since we are focusing in the right-of-way, would be the size of street trees. You know, what is the current standard versus, you know, what might be a better fit? If it's 12-foot right now, would 15-foot be a better suggestion, just because it's a bigger, mature tree, can handle more in terms of, you know, maintenance practices that might harm the tree? If a car hits it, it would withstand better, bigger established tree to prevent toppling over during a storm, that type of thing.
For the questions you recognize, sir.
If I may make a comment, I don't know if this comment's been made before, but I, I just want to stress it, especially in our parks, take into consideration that mosquitoes now are tremendous, I, I feel it's worse than ever, so just trying to pick species of plants that are mosquito deterrents, I think that that, that would go a long way, especially in the parks.
Sure, parks are not part of this particular project, but...
Public areas.
In, in general, yeah, I think...
In general.
In, in terms of plants, you're probably looking at things that hold water, such as bromeliads and that sort of thing.
Correct, keep the, yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not proposing those.
Okay.
Vice Mayor. Thank you. I just want to know, I'd heard this earlier on in our discussions, I've talked about it with the commission, I think I've even mentioned it to you and the city manager, I wanted to make sure that part of this plan did produce the availability for us to plan on the right-of-way to restore tree canopy and kind of a big picture of that, so that we can create a long-term plan and get the funding sources in to restore our tree canopy. I know that we're also talking about different landscaping, but it, it was brought to my attention, and I, I brought it to the commission, that we could expand the scope of our, I guess, study to include all the areas we might be able to plant trees, even on right-of-ways and some of our local roads. I just want to make sure that was part of this, because I do think it'll be great for us to have a, a long-term plan on restoring our tree canopy.
Well, we are looking at the, the overall, you know, right-of-way areas and tree canopy coverage. If you look at a map now of City of South Miami, a lot of the residential areas are pretty green, so you're going to find a lot more opportunities in some of the higher-density areas that, you know, we'd be looking at. But, you know, again, it's within the right-of-ways, so if it's the focus there, that, you know, that we'll be looking into.
Yeah, there's, there's a, to the Twin Lakes area of the city is particularly lacking in street canopy, and so, you know, we've all walked and knocked on doors in those areas, and it is blazing hot. So if that's an area, we can, I think, you know, the vice mayor's, yeah, so again, let's say that we, we're, I think, very keenly interested in seeing how we can quickly execute some canopy enhancements there, yeah. Yes, ma'am, you recognize?
I know this is going to sound like, I, I can't think of the right word, stupid, but when you guys give us a final product, can we please make sure that it says, "traffic circles"? Like, for lack of the right word, A, B, C, D, you can choose from one of these four, and these are the trees that you can choose from, so people don't go, go getting crazy creative. Because if we let people go crazy creative, we're going to end up where we started, which is nothing, there's no cohesiveness. Are we in agreement? Like, I don't know how to say that the nice way, I'm sorry.
I think she's looking for a, you know, what's it called, landscaping for, city landscaping for dummies, you know?
Yeah, comprehensive guide, so it maintains uniformity throughout the city.
Correct.
That is part of what we're looking at, is, you know, creating an identity in the city, so that would be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little, so, you said you're doing the right-of-way areas, but in the residential neighbor, inside, for example, Twin Lakes Drive, you're doing, you're, you're proposing for whatever...
Everything within the 50 feet of the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah, correct. But earlier, I heard you say that we're not going into the residential areas, that is the residential...
No, we're not going into the, they're not coming up with standard residential property.
No, no, I understand, I wasn't saying inside the resident, that's someone's private property. I meant, yes, the right-of-way, but in the residential neighborhoods.
Yes.
Yes, so we do have, you know, typical sections we're going to produce for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're, we're looking for those conditions that we can apply throughout the city as much as possible. That way, everything is cohesive.
Okay. Now, now I'm on the same page as you. There you go.
Thank you.
Now we're good.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation, we appreciate the good work, we're, just as you can tell, eager to get to, you know, having the, the standards executed on, so thanks again.
Thank you guys for the time.
Appreciate it. Hey, let's move on to, uh, Mr. Mu Yarat in Plusurbia. You stepped out and you missed your, uh, you missed your initial call, sir, so.
I missed my window, but I'm sure Miller Lake was happy.
Yes.
My apologies for that.
No, it's okay.
Good evening, everybody, so, um, I'm here to present a cohesive and holistic approach to your downtown. Um, I have, I'm going to keep it very quick, and, and then I'm going to give the, the, the presentation to Eric, our engineer. Um, we have not met since April, so it's been three months, I want to give you a very quick recap, very quick, Commissioner Bonice. Um, we, I'm going to show you again, just so that I, 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 I refresh your memory uh, of the two sides that we had agreed back in April for Sunset. Um, we are then going to talk about the next steps in terms of Task Five and the construction documents, that is the next phase that we need to do. Uh, there are some additional scope items based on the concept that was voted on. Uh, and, and then Eric is also going to show you an opinion of probable cost based on the design, the current concept design that we have. With some, uh, with some, uh, notion on the construction document, design fees, and then a very brief update on the lab grant. Um, so, April twenty ninth was the last time we met, uh, you probably recall these drawings, this is the east side, we call it the walk in the shade. Again, holistic and cohesive, that was the idea, maximizing the amount of open space for pedestrians and making sure that there is a consistency, again, between east and west and, uh, throughout, uh, the design. Uh, and, and taking over as much room as possible for, to be, to be able to balance pedestrian and vehicle alike. This is your existing and this is your proposed. Uh, if you recall, we've reduced some of the parking, but based on our information and our discussions with the stakeholders. Uh, we retained some of the parking, as well as providing some flex spaces for, uh, for deliveries, et cetera. Uh, on the e, on the west side, uh, we have created a much more, uh, consistent walkway on the south side. Uh, extended the sidewalk there, added trees, again, consolidated and, and, and made everything a lot more cohesive and provided more, a lot more room for trees, and this is your existing, and this is your proposed.
Sir, before you go past that slide, just because we had a comment earlier about a concern related to the removal of that, um, the median and that intersection.
Yes.
I just curious.
I can address it.
We've, we've, I'm assuming we've narrowed the dimension of the, uh, of the intersection that's being traversed?
Let me, let me answer it this way.
Go ahead.
We've retained the medians where, when, where they are necessary, but we've prioritized pedestrian space above the medians. So whenever pedestrian space was limited, we had to get that dimension from somewhere, and if we had to sacrifice a median, it was in the interest of providing that additional space for the pedestrian. At the end of the day, I totally agree with the comment, uh, medians are beautiful, they can be beautiful, they can create a gateway to a place. Um, but not to the detriment of space for the pedestrian, and that's, that's where we have removed.
Totally, totally on board with that concept and your thinking, and I'm just clarifying, is the dimension the same? Has, has the dimension gotten wider? Is it roughly equivalent, is it narrower? What's, what's the effect in terms of the distance someone is traversing to get from the north side of Sunset Drive to the south side?
It, where exactly?
In that center section where the median is not gone.
That center section.
Like, let's just say sixty first courts, right there? I would, I, I just want to, it appeared to me to be.
First court and, and the avenue?
Correct.
It is smaller, but that, and mainly, um, and, and the main reason is because there was no pedestrian, the pedestrian walk, because you have those, um, that arcade right there.
Okay.
So we have reduced it, yeah.
Okay, great, so again, I think it's just, in terms of people are concerned about the ability for people to safely traverse that segment. It's actually a shorter distance than it was with a protective median, okay?
And, and we've added a whole bunch of trees, which also, I think is important to mention, the more trees you have and the more, and the closer together they are.
The more pleasant it is to walk there, yeah.
And the more you slow cars down, so our landscape, uh, is for the pedestrian. Um, and, and it regulates, or it tries to minimize or mitigate some of the speed that you may see in the front.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, and, and with that, I'm going to give it up to Eric, who's going to talk to you about how we can implement, uh, taking this to the, to Task Five. Yeah, that's the next one, yeah.
Next one. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Eric Chineski with the Cordino Group. So, my role here in the next few slides is to kind of give you an idea on what has changed um, from the April two thousand twenty-four meeting you guys had, and we were talking about this before, the um, fifteen months of, um, visioning and branding and get to the April twenty ninth workshop um, to the current design from a civil standpoint and what's changed. So, we see on the slide here is what was contemplated for construction documents, um, initially back in early twenty twenty-four. Um, it included, uh, planting plans, irrigation, um, streetscape furniture, um, some minor typical sections. Because this was originally contemplated as a resurfacing job and a project that would work in what I call the roadway borders, that's sort of back of back of curb to the edge of right of way in those border areas on either side. Um, and what I'll show you now after, and this, this slide shows you what was contemplated initially on the prior design plan, which showed a lot of curb and gutter to remain, resurfacing, it's kind of what I just mentioned. Um, from, I think, the prior Marlin design plans. Um, this is a, um, slide that's important to, where we can step through sort of the changes that have occurred um, based on that planning process and the visioning. The project limits, um, will include the sixty-second Avenue to fifty-seventh Avenue, which was originally around two thousand six hundred twenty-nine milliliter feet. We're now including fifty-eighth Court, fifty-seventh Court to seventy-third Street, there's a couple of side streets, so we've increased that to thirty-two hundred sixty-five milliliter foot of total project area, which is about a twenty-five percent increase. Uh, the, like I had mentioned, the second, uh, item in that list is the roadway design resurfacing, it's now um, partial roadway reconstruction and sidewalk extension. Which provides a little bit more of a more complex design. Uh, we originally didn't have no traffic calming improvements anticipated, but there's now a raised intersection at the Sunset Drive and Fifty-eighth Avenue intersection. Which dovetails into the next item, there was really no signal, traffic signal modifications anticipated, now we're because we're putting in a raised intersection, we actually have to, um, adjust the signal heads and the signal modification, as due to the distance from the bottom of the signal head to the top of pavement. We originally had limited utility coordination, and now we have more extensive utility coordination due to the roadway reconstruction, the drainage infrastructure. Originally, just resurfacing, and typically don't get involved with any drainage design, and so now we have more, uh, utilities to, to look into as we're working into that curb line.
Sir, Eric, if I can ask.
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the takeaway from this slide?
Yeah, um, the next few slides, you'll get to the takeaway.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and then, uh, just real quickly, I'm getting ready to jump to the next slide, is the, uh, we originally weren't contemplating geotechnical, now we have geotechnical drainage, so we have expanded scope of services from what was originally contemplated in the early twenty twenty-four to now. This slide here, I just want to show you, this is sort of what's the main, one of the main reasons why a number of these items changed. Now we're expanding the sidewalk area in order to maintain, um, the slope. Uh, we have to get into new design of the pavement, uh, to the curb line, this was, I believe, discussed at the April twenty-nine workshop. So that direction was given, so now we have then moved on to this additional scope. Some items that haven't been fully vetted and contemplated tonight, um, in this opinion of cost, which is coming up in the next couple of slides. Um, would be, we're in the midst of the traffic study, where we're looking at the one-way directionality on fifty-seventh, fifty-eighth Court. That'll modify, um, you know, one, if it becomes feasible or not, based on the traffic, uh, circulation and the traffic operations. There's also currently a topographic survey being done by one of your multi, uh, one of your continuing services, CCNA consultants, that'll be available in September. So, what we are going to present to you as far as this opinion of cost, this is all based on this thirty percent design concept that we're at currently. In addition, lab support services still need to be decided whether or not we're going to move forward with doing lab support services, and then environmental services, I bring this up, is, um, at the kickoff meeting with FDOT some of the department heads at FDOT brought up bats and some other environmental issues, so that's still to be determined, so.
Sorry, I brought up bats?
There are bats and other native habits.
B A T S.
B A T S, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have a lot of that details, but I do know that that was discussed, so I did want to point that out.
On this segment?
On this section, this corridor section, yes, that's correct. I'm not an environmentalist, I won't speak to the.
No, I just have never seen a bat in.
So.
In this, on this corridor?
Yeah.
In your, oh, in our neighborhoods, yes, but, okay, sorry.
And I do remember, I wasn't here, but I have watched the videos back in February, that I think there was a question of how much is this going to cost? From a construction standpoint, so what we have done now is prepared, again, understanding that we don't have the topo survey yet, but from looking at cost per mile and items that we do know we are doing and, and some of the drainage work. Uh, we put together opinion of probable cost, and we are in, and I don't want to paraphrase this, just the number that we do have was ten million eight hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars and ninety-two cents, with a preliminary estimate at this point, so about just over, just under eleven million. And that includes, um, the stretch between, uh, for Sunset Drive between fifty-seventh Avenue and sixty-second Avenue, as well as the two side streets I previously mentioned. That cost per milliliter foot is three thousand three hundred thirty dollars and fifteen cents, based on the, the distance we did have that I had referenced previously. That was a three thousand two hundred sixty-five milliliter foot. As a comparison, and I know this was asked at that meeting in February of twenty twenty-four, is how does that compare to, whether that compared to other similar streetscape?
Don't mention the last one, please, that one gives me hyper.
They just range between nine million and twelve million, so, um, I'm, I'm sorry.
Nine thousand, twelve thousand.
Nine thousand to twelve thousand or so per milliliter foot, which is significantly less than some of those streetscapes, but um, that's kind of where we're at on what we know now, as the, based on the visioning plan that we are currently encountering at this thirty.
Eric, and those are their final costs? The numbers here, for comparison?
The numbers I have, those are the numbers that were published that we do know have, yeah, I, I don't know if that's the final construction, final closeout person, but that's the one that's been published that I've, we've seen for each of these projects.
Okay.
So, why are we talking about this, is that we initially had an initial design fee, um, anticipating a resurfacing job, and so we've got a lot of those items I mentioned, you know, traffic calming improvements, um, uh, getting into the curb and gutter, the utility coordination. That additional design fee, the original we had in, um, the Plusurbia contract, I think initially for Task Five was three-ten, nine-fifteen. Our estimate now is, as of, you know, the estimate we've prepared was, is at eight-thirty-seven, seven-thirty-five. Um, what I show you on the table there is a, sort of a matrix that's typically utilized DOT and other, um, agencies when there's grants and other projects. When you have a ten million dollar or more project, typical design fee is around fifteen percent. We're currently in that eight to ten percent range, uh, depending on some of those items that we've mentioned that may or may not be added in, um, into this scope, so we're at the eight-thirty-seven, so it's just over five hundred, five hundred and thirty thousand or so, in addition to what was originally contemplated for the, um, construction documents. I mentioned the FDOT lab grant, um, kickoff meeting, that was held June sixth, twenty twenty-five. A few things, like, that was mentioned just before, it was environmental protected species and habitats, contamination along this stretch. We haven't been given specific details on that, that needs to be further investigated. Um, the first and third bullets there, the east and west phasing, and, um, the non-number, number of review periods, that needs to be established. Are we going to do the whole stretch in one phase, are we just going to do the lap eastern phase? Are we going to do all three of them, including the side streets? Um, that's important, because the more, uh, some mills you have separately, um, there's, there's some additional, um, processing and permitting. Then there was Buy America, Build America Product Compliance was brought up by FTT as well. Um, and that's really what I'm going to go over, we can dig into the numbers more, but I, we wanted to report back as far as, um, where we are at from Task Five, which we hadn't really got into, because we still haven't got the survey yet, which, my understanding is supposed to be delivered mid-September by, I think it's the EXP team, so.
Okay, team, where do you want to start? Yes.
Who has approved this one way and one way, because everybody that I have actually talked to, and I've probably talked to about maybe fifteen people. Nobody likes the one way and one way idea.
Which, can we go back to that slide, I'm sorry, John?
Everybody keeps talking about it, like, on the fly, and.
Let's, let's see, because I'm not sure what condition you're talking about.
Exactly.
Guys, hold on a second, please, one at a time. Can we go back to the slide that's got the intersection on the east side? Okay, so, can we keep going back? Oh, or go forward, I'm not sure which one it is, Juan, do you know which one it is?
It's just there.
This one here, okay.
It's right there.
Those two side streets in red, the red boxes there, see?
I see the two red boxes, but we, we've got, on fifty-seventh Court, we've got a two-way condition.
No, they weren't talking about fifty-seventh Court, they were talking about fifty-eighth Avenue and fifty-seventh, fifty-eighth Court. If I'm not mistaken.
Fifty-eighth Court would be one, one way southbound? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, we're, we're evaluating which way would be better, so that's what the traffic analysis, the study that we're doing now.
Yeah, I, I think we have opined repeatedly that that's the, that's the egress and ingress of our garage. And so the two-way functionality there, that's, that's, that's a segment where I thought we had chosen already to sacrifice primacy of the pedestrian to preserve, uh, the functionality of the garage. So I, again, if that's being evaluated, it shouldn't be, right?
Exactly.
I don't know if anybody disagreed with that.
No.
We've said it now multiple times.
Okay, okay.
No.
So I think, I mean, that's, I think that's certainly something that we've, as a majority of the board, not unanimously discarded for that reason. Uh, I think there was, I think discussion on fifty-seventh Court, and that was something I think we had left open, but, no?
Not, I don't think that, I, I think we even said maybe there, and then we said, no, that doesn't make any sense, because then you're one way to nowhere. You know what I mean, and we, and we said.
Fifty-seventh Court was going to stay two-way?
Mm-hmm, but, because we said, oh, well, maybe then you do that, and then we said, wait, that doesn't make any sense, because then you have one street that goes one way, and that, one way to where?
And I think.
And then it died.
Yeah, and I think eliminating that left-hand turn is a mistake, but I think that's a mistake, personally. Um, I have a question, and, and Juan, this is probably going to include you. Um, and please, if, if I may.
It's fine, you're right.
You're asking now for an additional five hundred thousand dollars for design fees.
Let's, let's go back to the, can we go back to the slide? If you go forward, John, or whoever got the control.
I'm correct, five hundred and change?
Let's, let's go to the slide on the, you know, design fee change, so, it was after the long list.
Right there.
Okay, so, we went from three-ten to eight-thirty-seven, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, Juan, this is just, I, 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 because it's, so, the RFQ goes out. City chooses you to go out. I imagine that before me, you got, you got an idea of what we were kind of, or what they were trying to do with new Sunset Drive and basically, you know, the redesign of, of our downtown, correct? So, in that design, and I imagine going back to that. We're being told now that at that time, expanded sidewalks were not in the theory of it, so we were going to leave the sidewalks like that? The trees, there was no new tree infrastructure, so we were going to leave the same trees there? I, I, I just, if, it, it's hard for me, and I'm in the business, I, I understand, as you know, that you're going into a bid assuming that all these things weren't going to get done, but then how do we beautify our, our, our downtown? We were just going to leave everything, roadways weren't going to be done, I just don't understand that.
Sure.
How do you go into the bid not assuming those things, and then now saying, oh, but we are doing these things?
Right, so the information that we had in the RFQ, the only design that we actually had in the RFQ was the design that was provided, uh, which was just resurfacing. The process of the project included public outreach and a design, a design, uh, process of, with the community. Which made changes to, changes that we were not expecting, and were not part of the RFQ. The RFQ never said whether or not, uh, curbs were going to be moved, and so we made necessary assumptions to adjust to a uh, to adjust the price to what we could foresee, uh, could become the final design, which it's never the same as what you foresee, because you have public input, you have, uh, debate with the commissioners. Um, the design is not what I expected, honestly, um, and that's, that's part of the design process that we go through.
Yeah, I just find that, I, I, I can't imagine any of my colleagues who were here at the time not wanting bigger sidewalks, new lighting, new trees. I mean, a facelift to, to our downtown and to Sunset Drive as a whole, so, I don't know, I, again, I'm just questioning geotech report, I mean, a geotech report you do for, for any reason, just to find out what, what, any roadway, you're, you're switching anything, so to know, to say like, oh, now we have to do a geotech report, I don't, I, that's just, I mean, you do geotech reports with a, any simple construction site, yeah, um, something that we were going to change drastically, I, I don't know, I just feel like now, now these things are coming back, and now we're getting charged five hundred thousand. now, now these things are coming back and now we're getting charged five hundred thousand when, I don't know, I just felt like this should have all been anticipated. Because you, I, I don't feel as a designer, you'd be very happy leaving Sunset Drive with the trees and sidewalks as they are now.
No, I certainly don't, but, but again, the design that I had in mind going into this project was very different from the design that we actually came up with. And, and again, that's the nature of this project, which the design is not for me, it's for the stakeholders and yourselves. And so you're the guys that, you're, you're the ones that drive, you got, the, the, the city is the one that drives the design. And those changes are, you know, we can't foresee those when we put the RFQ together. All we can do is put our best proposal forward. And, and again, with limited information and with no feedback from you, which is something that I, I would like to.
From, from us or the public, I think as well, yeah. Right, from us or the public.
Well, when we put the RFQ proposal, we're under a kind of silence. So there is no way that I can have a discussion with you about what your vision is or what you would like or what you would not like. And so we're really putting a proposal together based on our best assumptions. The best assumptions back then were the design of, remind me the.
Marlin.
From Marlin, which was resurfacing.
Yeah, but you're not going to do that, that's.
I understand, I, I.
So look, I think, I think we, let's, let's, I think if we, I'm going to suggest this as a path forward and just kind of truncate the conversation. I think you've explained what you brought to the table when we, we did the solicitation. I think we have, we have, we have some choices. Mr. Manager, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. One is, we can choose to authorize this design task with them, we're not, right? We can also, if you've got, if we have some concern about whether or not this should have been a contemplated expense, right? We can also compare it to, compare the scope that they provided versus the scope of one of the respondents. Just to, and maybe there's a way to try to negotiate some of this into a cost. We have a five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar delta, it's not a happy, it's not a happy event for any of us. If we don't like the number we're being given, we could, we could potentially bid out this design work to the market as well, correct? And see if we get better pricing.
Yeah, I, I, certainly the, the, the issue of one, so as you mentioned, Commissioner Rodriguez, qualifications, we pick a vendor, then a, a scope is negotiated and that's where the pricing comes in. But that is not influenced yet by the process. And so when the process get, get, is kicked off with the community input, additional commission input, the charrette that was, that was had, those elements and those desires of those that participated then influence additional design. Or you could say, no, we're not doing any of that. So that, that's where this evolves. That's not atypical, usually in these processes where you are engaging and getting feedback, these things do evolve. And that's the difficulty between a, a bid project where you say, these are the specs and you bid on it versus a, a process that is taking input from people and a design evolves as a result of that input, right? And so that's what you're seeing. Whether it is the right number or not, subject to, to debate, but how it gets here, it's not uncommon to see this variation when you're having.
But I think, I think just to give Commissioner Rodriguez and all of us some peace of mind, Mr. Manager, probably it's not a bad idea to go back and look at the competitive separate polls and see what the assumptions were with regard to the design scope there as well. Just, just, again, just to double check, it's been a long time since I know I've looked at the documents.
Yeah, so just.
Unless you already have.
No, just clarification, so when we put the RFQ out, it was very, very driven by, let's say, a vision and then their capabilities and prior experiences, right? And then the scope was developed afterwards because it was based on qualifications. So we, we didn't really go to other vendors and say, okay, you know, let's negotiate. We negotiate it with them.
So no, no one provided a design scope for the civil work, is what you're saying?
Not from a standpoint that had numbers attached to it, right? And there was no financial component to the process. It was, yeah, it was after the selection of the vendor. Then, then we didn't enter negotiations with multiple parties. We entered negotiations with the vendor that we selected.
Yeah, you, you, there, there was, and I understand.
Yeah.
There are changes, I mean, in construction sites especially, something, a, a, a project like this, you're going to have a ton of changes. And I, I completely understand changes. Once you were hired as the firm, I imagine the vision that was given to you is, this is what we want. And again, the, the, it's, there's not changes. It's as, we never thought of putting new lighting in. We never thought of new sidewalks. We never thought of new trees. That's where I'm getting at, like, I would imagine that you guys would have said, we want new trees, new some, that, that's all I'm saying is, these aren't changes. These are just never were. That, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. I understand if there's changes throughout the process, absolutely. You're going to have input from the commission, from the, from, from all the, the residents and all that, as we did previously. But to never have, as a vision, to change the lighting, to change the sidewalks, I just find that so, like.
No, we, we did to a certain extent, and let me give you, I mean, since you're in the industry, you'll hope to make a, a, a good, fair comparison that, that is easier to understand. Imagine if you go to a contractor and say, bid for a house, and he says, what house? And you say, well, I don't have a design, but bid for a house. We don't have a design, we did not have a design. We had a notion of what could be based on what Marlin had put together, but to be honest, we had not met with the family that was going to live in the house or with, you know, the architect. So that bid was based on many assumptions that included some lighting, included some trees, included some things. But, you know, again, we didn't have a design, and so that, that's where we're at. Again, I wish I had a better example, but you're, you're bidding as a contractor on a job with no plans.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, I, I, I get that.
That's where the difference comes.
I get, I get it, I, I, I do. I was just saying, but a scope was given. And when a scope is given, you have some sort of idea of what the vision is. So with the vision, you could imagine, okay, with that vision, you're going to want new lighting, new trees, new sidewalks. So that's, that's just the point I'm, at this point, I mean, there's nothing we could do.
I'm not in this group of you at all, Commissioner, I, I just, please understand, we took what we had from Marlin. We made assumptions. We could have also said, you know what, this is South Miami, they love their public realm. You know, Flagler was eleven million. That maybe, let's take the FDOT, cut it at fifteen percent, you know, our fee is now two million dollars. We didn't think that was going to be it. We thought, well, what is something tangible that we can work with? Is the Marlin plan? Do they like it? No, but that is what was asked before, which was in essence resurfacing and not touching a lot of the, a lot of the curbs. And we thought, that's a safe bet. We'll see where that gets us, with full knowledge that it would change and it has, and it is the number that you see now.
Okay.
Can we go back to the prior slide? Because I think we are where we are on this part of the conversation, but I think you've raised some excellent points. What, what is still missing to kind of round out a more definitive number on this probable cause estimate and the attendant design fee?
Oh, and that.
So that, this is, this is the other, this is the other part of the scope that's still, still nebulous.
What, what, if I may?
Yeah.
Once we get the topographic survey and we start, you know, working our way from that thirty percent to sixty percent, you start getting into elevations and seeing how much you're, you're excavating on the curb line there in order to reconstruct some of the roadway. Those numbers at ten-point-eight will start to be narrowed in more. I mean, obviously we have some contingencies in there. Keep in mind as well, and again, hearing the discussion on the dais about the one-way streets, keep in mind that if we don't do those one-way, those two-side streets, the total cost of construction will go down. And we've got it factored in for our design to do the side streets too. So, you know, if you say we're not doing those two-side streets, then we would adjust, again, adjust the fee down slightly. I mean, to that.
But.
Because the length of the lineal foot, it won't be, the total length of the project limits will be less than. I, I don't want to, I'm not leading any direction.
I'm trying to ask, as a, as a non-contractor lawyer on the, on the dais, what are the cost implications of these five bullet points on your design fee that's additional? I mean, you're talking about an extra ten, fifteen, twenty percent, what, I mean, what, what does the?
Yeah, the survey has already been contracted out with one of your CCNA consultants, so that wouldn't be contemplated. I think the LAPP support services, depending what level of effort is, is required, we've already.
You, you got to tell us, I mean, we, we've never gone through a lab process.
It's like fifty-two thousand, I think, is what we included and factored in for that duration of the eastern portion. That's under the LAPP agreement.
And that's not, and that's not reflected in the fee that's on the next slide? Okay, so that's plus fifty.
That could be something that the, the city would do with staff that's already been certified.
We don't, we don't have certified staff, so it's not something we can do.
And then the right-of-way acquisition services was something we don't provide. And I, and I'll let, you know, Juan or Jimmy speak to that five-foot right-of-way easement. There's a portion of the work and the, the west side section that isn't going to fit within the available right-of-way. So we, we're not including in right-of-way acquisition services because it's not something we're qualified to do.
Again, just to clarify on that point, we're talking about just the five-foot segment in front of our own property. We're not talking about any, any right-of-way acquisition. We're really talking about us setting aside five feet.
Yeah, our understanding is it's just an extension of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Potentially to be built by the developers. So the easement is just the right to use that space and be clear for.
But it's not an easement because we own it, so it's, it's just better, it's just, it comes out of the fee that they're given in order to develop, so, okay.
Eventually will be an easement.
So we just need.
Make sure that there's a clear path.
Okay. Okay, so there, there's no really any need for any right-of-way acquisition service fees. So bullet point two should be removed from the scope. Okay, so two and three are not going to be part of your scope. One, we've indicated we have no interest in, in exploring. And so the delta on the LAPP service is fifty-two thousand dollars, and what about the environmental services we have to deal with bats?
We'd have to get a quote. I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable enough to know that number yet. We have to still talk to DOT. But I'm thinking of, you know, just from other projects I recall, it's in the same fifty thousand dollar range is what I would think, depending on how complicated the environmental habitat and all that stuff, that's, it's, it's out there.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm just going to, I want to just crystallize some points. We've got, let's move forward to the prior slide, to the next slide. Can we move forward on the presentation, John? One more time? Thank you, okay, so we've got eight-thirty-seven as the revised design fee, plus another two, another hundred and two thousand dollars in potential add-ons, is my math, okay? Which is a delta of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the original scope. So, Mr. Manager, in terms of our, again, assuming we can fund this, my understanding, Eric, from what I heard in the presentation, is you won't be able to start this work at the earliest until you get the topo survey completed, correct?
To move towards with the construction documents, Task Five, that's correct.
And between nine, so nine fifteen and now, we have to make a decision whether we authorize this task with this vendor or we decide to go in some other direction, correct? That's really our choice to make. Am I misunderstanding what we're?
I don't think, I don't think we have a choice.
The purpose of this presentation?
I don't think we have a choice, we have to.
We don't have to, we don't have to, I don't, I don't think we're required legally to perform any, yes, you can if you'd like to.
We have to take into account the discount that we get for not having the traffic study done for those two one-way streets. And Commissioner Rodriguez brought something up that I had forgotten. We had had also a laborious conversation on that no-left turn that I don't remember, but he seems to remember that we kept saying that we did not want to take off that left-hand.
We'll pull the minutes on that, but, but again, that's, in terms of, in terms of the cost.
Yeah, but even if it's fifty thousand dollars, it's taking off one of the things that's on.
I get it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to quibble about whether it's, we should say that, well, you're not, we should, if that's something we don't want. I guess my point is, what are our, my point is, we have a presentation. I'm assuming the purpose of this presentation is to ask us, let's, let's go forward, correct? I'm assuming that's why this is here. So my question is, what are our choices if we are uncomfortable with the cost, short of showing the project? I mean, are we, are we, to the C Attorney and the manager, are we bound to execute this task with this vendor? Or do we have the option of putting this out just to test the pricing and see if we get better pricing? Also, what are our, our options, procurement options? And maybe we don't have that answer today, but I think between now and November fifteenth, which is the earliest we can move forward with this next task, I'd like to understand what our choices are and how we can fund what is not in, you know, in substantial gap. Am I articulating, I think, our concerns and our desire? Okay. So I think that's the homework between now and the fifteenth, maybe at least for the second meeting in August. Let's try to have an answer to that question so we don't lose any time in terms of advancing the project forward.
So it would, it would be specific to the civil work? That would be, because the design is done.
The design is done, yeah, this is the civil design piece, yeah, civil design piece, yeah. Which is, I think, Task Five, correct? Okay. It did, except it was, it was, it was, it was represented a cost of three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, plus or minus. Okay, and we're being told it's going to be nine hundred and, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Okay. Okay. Okay, so I think that's our homework between now and November fifteenth, and we thank you for the update. We appreciate the clarification. And yes.
One last thing.
Yes, please.
And what, what we'd like to do is we could put together, maybe for one of these next videos, an actual written scope proposal with backup, labor hour breakdown, specifically says what's included and not included, so there's no.
That would be great.
If that's, and that's how I like to, would like to do it, and so it's very clear and.
Eric, we, we'd appreciate if you get that to the manager, we'd be grateful, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation and the update.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, we've got some people that are waiting here, so I'm going to ask if it's okay we take up item, huh? Let's do item ten, because I think we have counsel here and then, is there anybody else here for another item? The discussion item on, on M-one? Okay, so let's take up ten and then M-one, okay? I think we need a quasi-judicial warning on that one as well. Mr. C Attorney, no? It's not?
quasi-judicial.
Okay, my apologies.
Item ten, yeah. Item ten, a residential American City Commission of the City of Southern Florida approving the classification of individualized learning schools as a permitted use in their residential office, RO zoning district pursuant to section twenty-dash-three-point-three-C-five of the city code.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. C Attorney.
Sure, sure. Mayor, Commissioners, this, there is a provision in your code which provides for new or unlisted uses that are of a similar nature to the list of, of permitted uses within a given category. This is, we received a request to do an analysis for, for a new use, an individualized learning center. This is an existing tutoring use that was on, in, within the RO district, and the request is to consider whether an individualized learning center is appropriate as a permitted use within the RO district. There was an analysis done, the, the process involves an analysis done by the, the director of Development Services, that, that staff, that is in part of your staff recommendation, they make a recommendation to the manager, and the manager, manager brings it to you for, either for approval or for a different determination. So that's what's before you this evening, I believe, I'm not sure if Mr. Alvarez or Mr. Lightfoot has more to say on this, but.
Thank you, Mark Alvarez with the Cordina Group as planning staff for the City of South Miami. Mr. Esio basically summarized it, we have a, an institution called the Brightmont Academy on Seventy-sixth Street. They are currently operating a tutorials, tutoring service. It's one-on-one learning, K through twelve. It's basically a school, but they are in the RO district and they are listed right now, they are categorized right now as a, an individual, individualized learning center. RO does not allow schools and the, this category of use, the Brightmont Academy, and we have had one other person come in on the same question, that they would like to access greater state funding and federal funding, but they need to be called a school to do it. So we have analyzed it, we looked at it, we said, well, if it's one-on-one, we don't have any of the problems of schools. We don't have the noise, we don't have the queuing, we don't have the traffic problems. There is nothing wrong with allowing this use as a permitted use within the RO category because from the outside, it would look and feel just like a professional office. We have children, students going in one-on-one for one-on-one sessions, we never have a lot of people there. There's a lot of online learning as well. The, the, both, in both cases, we've had requests to allow for small testing situations where there might be up to six or eight students. And again, we looked at this, but this is not unlike having a conference in an office. So we see no externalities of this that would be an impact as anything unlike a professional office situation inside the RO residential office category. The building would still have to be in some, RO does require that the office itself look like or look compatible with the homes across the street or next to it. All that would still carry, so we've created a few bullet points, a few rules to categorize it as an individual learning school, we're using the word school, and it would not be anything to do with any other school for classroom learning. And it would not be anything to do with any other school for classroom learning. The bullet points are, it's one-on-one, it can be, it can be online. And that we can have some small amounts of testing. We used eight students as a maximum. And that it basically just operates in the manner that it is. We've put all those rules in there and this would allow that use to be included as an R O use. Just to give you a little background on the other person that came in, they are already in Sunset Place, operating a very similar type of learning center. They're also looking at the same thing. Obviously Sunset's place, they are going to have to leave as a tenant soon and they're looking. This will, we, we looked at that, it's a little outside of the box for this meeting, but we also realized that we can allow this use as it is in the T S D D. But for this right now, we're going to, we recommend that you approve it or approve, what's the exact language? Authorize the manager to approve it. So that this would be a permitted use in the R O category.
And just, just one clarification. Although there is a gentleman who requested this, it's not limited to that site. It would, it would, it's for that district.
Understood. And so I, I looked at this and have some experience representing, it's funny, my former colleague is here, representing educational use of this type and understand the difficulties in citing them and understand the need to have a school designation because it's the only way to access the voucher funding that flows with the designation. So I'm sympathetic to the application. I, I am concerned about this specific location. And so I don't, I don't know if the applicant or the beneficiaries wanting to make a proffer around just restricting or, or maybe just as a matter of determination, requiring a declaration to basically cite the use in this category. So we have some added protections with respect to enforcement and making sure that people adhere to these standards. Because at this particular location, colleagues, we do already have a preschool just around the corner and up the street. And so while the use as it's operating today has really been completely innocuous and not a problem, you know, that's, that vesting the use at this location as a potential in the future, should this school relocate and another school seek to occupy this space, if it grows beyond individualized, individualized learning, it could begin to be create some issues in terms of, of queuing and traffic. I don't think that's going to be the case with this specific example. But I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if it's, it's appropriate to require that as part of the manager's approval of the use.
I think it's fine to, I think it's safer to require it.
Okay.
If we can say subject, subject to the, the conditions and limitations of the, subject to a covenant.
Correct. That reflects the.
Confirming that they meet these requirements.
Correct.
They will continue to meet these requirements.
I think if that's added, I'm a little bit less concerned about authorizing this use.
We can do that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Marrow, good to see you.
Good to see you. Mickey Marrow here on behalf of Brightmont Academy. My address is doing it in South Biscayne Boulevard. So yeah, I think Mr. Resio, Mr. Alvarez has covered it pretty well. To, to be fully frank, they've been operating there since 2023. Brightmont is a national institution. They've been operating throughout the country since 1999. They're very unique. They only offer one-on-one schooling and it, it covers K through 12. It's generally for students with either special needs. Sometimes it's athletes that have time constraints. But for whatever reason, these students have special needs and identify, and will benefit from one-to-one learning. That is all that they offer, that is their whole business model. But we'd have no problem submitting a covenant consistent with the conditions that Mr. Alvarez identified in the resolution. I've, I've discussed that with my client, they have no issue at all. And again, they, nothing will change except the fact, because they've been operating essentially this way. The city license, they currently have says tutoring services. And I think that's because you don't have the traffic issues and the recreational issues. It's one floor, it's got seven learning areas. It's really like five to 10 kids there at a time. So that's why no one's complained about traffic or noise. We'd be happy to submit a covenant. Nothing will change other than the word school being in their license, allowing them access to vouchers and other state funding. Happy to answer any questions you may have. I know it's a long night, so I don't want to.
No, I think, anyone have any questions, Mr. Marrow? I think again, Mr. Marrow, thank you for your comments. Again, I just, just to the manager and the city attorney, this designation is adjacent to, you know, single-family neighborhoods. So you've got on 57th Avenue where we do have a couple of schools already agreed to there between Mandelstam and Epiphany and Lourdes right around the corner. This section on 62nd where they're located also has a concentration of R O. And so again, I don't know whether there's in a future discussion, whether we should think about having a spacing requirement between similar educationally designated institutions. It won't affect the current applicant, but just to avoid the prospect of, well, maybe not. Well, let's talk about that. I'm just, again, concerned about the proximity of single-family and not in this case, but another model where I guess we've not opened the door to allow for more than just one-on-one instruction, correct? With the exception.
That's all you are opening the door to.
If that's the case, then I have no objection. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kaye, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonish?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five.
Thank you. Let's take up M1, Commissioner. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kaye, I think this is your item, M1. Madam Clerk, if you can read it.
Student housing for Commissioner Kaye.
So it's come to our attention that we have by the metro station district, an opportunity for school's own student apartment housing. The current ones that we have through the county do not have any parking allocated to that. This particular position is something that we wanted to discuss as if to lowering the actual parking requirements for student housing, specific college student housing. And also speaking with and trying to speak with the director of facilities over at the University of Miami, trying to understand what the impact is on cars with students bringing, bringing them down, you know, on campus, off campus and whatnot. It's been, you know, it's brought to my attention that there's not that many cars that are actually brought down. They, you know, they usually like to Uber or walk or metro or whatever mobility that is available to them. So just wanted to discuss if the appropriate, and we, and send a memo, the appropriate parking requirements are feasible? If it's something that we wanted to make a change? You know, it's, it's, it's a location that we, we kind of want to make sure it changes. So this is an opportunity to do so. So just wanted to see what you guys thought about this.
Colleagues, who wants to start? Feedback, comments? So I, I guess I'll kick off. I sent some, some comments to the manager. I mean, I, I think obviously we welcome the student housing. It's, you know, there's one location, I think we all, so a person in our project sponsor in the room, we all want to see a converted. We had a public testimony about it. My only concern with this is, you know, it's not a housing type that we aren't, I mean, there's a lot of demand for, natural demand for. So I don't want to over incentivize it simply because, you know, we're not seeing coming through the door every other day is, you know, market rate residential or for sale. Particularly in this area or in other areas as well, and other areas of our town center as well. To, to, my interaction with people, student housing, for obvious reasons, given our proximity to U M is the preferred typology that we're seeing coming in and, and people trying to exploit the market opportunity. I don't know what the right amount of parking is. I don't know that, you know, I certainly, my experience with this industry is that it's rented on a per, units are rented on a per-bed basis. I don't know that we have specifically any rules that would, if we created it. If we created a use category, we could restrict occupancy to students specifically?
Yes.
We could.
You could.
Okay. So I think if we, if we can develop a use category where the occupancy is restricted to units and we have the ability to enforce that, then I have less of a concern about the parking reduction. Because I think exactly to your point, I think, you know, I'm glad that we've had conversation with U M and observed with their pattern experiences there as well. So if we are going to fashion some rules that would allow us to restrict occupancy, you know, of the unit based on the individual, then I think a parking reduction is probably more appropriate. What the number is, I don't know if it's, you know, 50% of what the baseline number is today for multifamily. But I'm, I'm open to that conversation. Again, if there is that connection between the occupant and the, and the unit typology.
Is that something that we can get a proper, proper for, make sure that there's an understanding for that? Or how does that work, Mr. City Attorney?
So you, you're having this discussion to, to, to potentially direct us to, to prepare an ordinance and bring something back to you that fits whatever, whatever you guys, whatever the vision is. So what I've heard so far is that you'd like to restrict, this would be like a, like a maximum number of beds per, per unit? Something along those lines?
Was that what you concerned, Mayor? I didn't hear that, though.
I, I think, I think, I think, I think there's, I mean, a couple, I mean, that becomes more consequential if we're going to provide a parking minimum based on a unit. Defining unit becomes, you know, more consequential in that kind of a scheme. But if we're actually tying beds to heads and saying only those beds could be occupied by certain heads, then, you know, I'm, I'm less concerned about this number of units because we're really, and I would say we should tie the parking to the total number of beds in the building. Right? Because I mean, I, again, and I know we've got a project sponsor here, but my understanding is that typically these, they may be, you know, rooms that have a common living area and be four individual beds, but the, the leases are executed on a per-bed basis with each of the students, right? I'm not sure if they're rented on a per-unit basis. So I think, correct. So I think, I think we should just, you know, understand the business model and tie the regulatory framework to it.
Okay.
I think that'll probably serve the purpose of both us as a regulator and the sponsor in getting an outcome that's rational, right? The question I do have for you, Mr. Resio and the manager, is then how do we enforce and supervise that the occupancy is to an individual who's eligible? And I, I don't want to be overly intrusive with the sponsor. But, you know, if we're going to reduce parking substantially here for this kind of use, then, you know, I don't want it to become a backdoor for someone to offer multifamily units, right? With no parking. So I'll leave that hard work for you to figure out.
We'll have to, yeah. Let us noodle on that.
Thoughts?
I, I don't think I disagree with that. I don't know what the rest of the commission feels about it, but.
I know we've got an interested party and counsel for that party here. Do we want to hear any thoughts that they have on, on this topic?
Specifically on operating, what, what their thought process was so we can understand it.
Do you want to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Nick Noto from Law Firm Building, Stenberg Office, looking at 1450 Prickle Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of Alta Development. We are, we are hoping to redevelop the roadway in, 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 at light speed, honestly. We have plans for a project. We have met with your staff with them. This parking issue is kind of like the last piece of the puzzle that we need to make work. We've had some conversations with your city attorney. We don't know if this looks like just maybe a waiver process that comes to you at the special exception. So you guys will have the final, be the final arbiter of that decision regardless of what it looks like. And we'd obviously need to create some criteria for your consideration of that decision. But we would, we would want to restrict this, you know, really the justification is its proximity to metro. Our site happens to be adjacent to it. We would want to be, I guess, I think, limited in scope of geography to make sure that this is narrowly tailored in a way that, that works for student housing, that student housing is in the right places, which we think we just have a, kind of the premier site for this type of use. You guys will see this, this isn't about our project in particular, you'll see it coming down the pike. But it's very high-end, it's, it's a product that South Miami is very happy with. And we're excited to kind of get to that phase. But this was a piece of the puzzle that we wanted to have the conversation with you first. See if we can get to include maybe some legislation to help us figure out the parking piece.
Through the mayor.
Recognized.
Can you talk a little bit about maybe the operational part of, of this project? For example, is it going to be rent per bed? Is it a unit basis rental with X amount of units? What's the thought processor fundamentally of, of the business?
Is it going to be a student, I mean, I think there's also a model, I've seen in Sweetwater, which is a condo that's actually sold for, I mean, or marketed to student housing. What's, yeah, what's the?
This is going to be individual multifamily rentals directly to, to the students. It's not going to be a, the, the owner will retain ownership of the, of the asset and rent them directly to students. And I do believe it's on a per, per unit basis and the unit would be the apartment bedroom.
Jonathan Pavlo with Alta Development, yeah, so.
Into the microphone if you can. My apologies, one more time for the record.
Jonathan Pavlo with Alta Development.
Good job.
Students are essentially put into a pool and they're placed based off of male versus female and things like that. So the target is students. However, if we can't legally prohibit it versus we can, I think that's something you guys can decide on. But yeah, it's going to be owned, fully rental, annual leases. So this isn't short-term rental or anything like that.
Sorry, fully owned, you mean, so the units will be kind of minimized or the, no?
Owned by.
Fully, so it'll be a purpose-built student housing project owned by a single operator?
It's a multifamily site. Specialized for students.
Okay.
All right, so if you have a unit, a four-bedroom unit, is there one lease on that one unit? Or is it four leases per that one unit?
Each individual student would have their own lease.
Per, per bed?
Correct.
All right, and the reason, and the reason that we're very specific on student is if you start condom, you know, making it general public and people have, if it's one unit, four beds, and they start putting in six people in those, and there's four cars allocated, it probably not only allows your parking garage, it's going to filter throughout our whole town center area. Right, and we're going to have an issue. So that's, that's why we're concentrating on making sure that it's student.
Correct.
Very specific to student housing.
Correct. If I could legally limit to students, it's only going to be better for us. So frankly, we do prefer students only. However, Fair Housing Act, I believe, is something that say, hey, if you want to apply and do this. In the past, our partners have had families come and say, hey, we want to put two people in one room. No, it's one person per room. So if you had a family of four, you have to rent all four rooms, which would make it unaffordable compared to normal Miami housing.
So you could prohibit the amount of people per room?
Correct, it's one person per bedroom.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we, we have a sense of, sorry, go ahead, Nick.
I was just going to say, I think we just want to take the time to work with your professional staff and come up with something that we think will work for everybody for your consideration. At this point, I think that's all we're asking for you to authorize.
And I think you're hearing, we've got no objection to doing that.
Yeah.
My only other caveat would be that I would want it limited to the TODA, which is the area closest to the transit station. I don't want it in the T S D D generally.
Agreed.
Because, you know, again, that, that begins to bleed into areas that are closer to, to residential. So I don't think that affects your, your case. But I think just to start this experiment, let's limit it to that geographic area unless there's an objection.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this item? You'll workshop it with each of us and we'll bring it back at the appropriate time. Okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, moving on, what do we got next? On the resolutions, colleagues, any items you want to discuss, seven, eight, nine, and 11? Well, 11 we'll leave for discussion. I, okay, let's take up, Madam Clerk, if you can read seven, eight, nine, please, for the record.
Item seven, a reservation of the mayor's city commissioner of the city of South Miami Florida approving a proposal in a project agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. to provide extended owners' representative project management service for the sanitary sewer improvement sub-area K, Phase One Project, in amount of $6,940. Item eight, a reservation of the city commissioner of the city of South Miami Florida approving and authorizing the waiver of certain event-related fees and costs in amount not to exceed $15,659.49 pursuant to section 15B dash six of the city code for especially been known as the Sunday Motorcycle Show presented by Pub 52 Sports Bar and Grill LLC to be held on Sundays beginning on August 10, 2025 through December 28, 2025 at Pub 52 Sports Bar and Kitchen. Item nine, a reservation of the mayor's city commissioner of the city of South Miami Florida approving the name of Southwest 64th Street between 67th Court and 68th Court in honor of our parion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just having Clerk read those items. So you said we want to have individualized motions, we can do that. Or if we want to adopt them all at once. I'd like to move seven and nine unless there's an objection to them.
Seven and nine, forward?
Yeah, forward for adoption. Okay, so who'd like to second it? Commissioner Rodriguez? So motion by myself, a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll on items seven and item nine.
Item seven, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonish?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five.
Can I move item nine and Commissioner Rodriguez? Can I move item nine and Commissioner Rodriguez seconds the same, if you can call the roll on that item, please?
Yes, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonish?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, when we get the signage in hand, if we can just organize a small recognition ceremony, we'd be grateful. Okay, thank you. On item eight, I just, I think this is an interesting event, I just wanted to quickly add, I mean, it's for, we're authorizing a very long period of time. I don't know if we wanted to pilot this for a couple of months and see how it goes beyond just authorizing the waiver all the way through December. Or I didn't know who, I'm not sure who the sponsor of this is, I haven't talked to anybody about it. If there's a particular reason why we wanted to go all the way to December today, but one of my concerns is, you know, I'm not sure, Mr. Riverall, what the utilization of on-street parking is on that segment on Sundays from one to five, we're losing inventory now with Avalon Bay coming online on 73rd on portions of the adjoining, adjoining. So this is where we're going to take up, you know, the one on-street parking segment that we do have available on Sundays. Again, from my recollection, Sundays are not high utilization days in terms of parking. I always wonder whether we do any enforcement for parking anyways on Sundays. Commissioner Rodriguez is just kind of sitting up there to say we should eliminate parking fees on Sundays altogether. But, but nonetheless, I, you know, I, you know, again, I don't want to, I don't want to be a spoiler here, but I'm wondering whether we should authorize this for a couple of months and see how it goes. As opposed to all, all the way to December, thoughts on that, colleagues? I don't know if anybody in particular is, knows, has spoken to the sponsor about this at all?
I have, I have, I have not spoken to, to the sponsor about this, I, I just had a question to the manager. Do, did, by any chance, before we, we approve this, have we gotten any feedback from the neighboring restaurants?
We have.
Yeah, they have, and I'll let the Parks Director elaborate, but they have contacted, I think there was two businesses that were still pending, I don't, maybe by now, they may have concluded that. But they have contacted some of the neighboring businesses.
Good evening, the applicant has contacted seven of the 10 businesses, or seven of the 10 active businesses in that area. The three that have not been contacted yet is Spruce Juice, which is closed on Sundays. Sweat 440 is closed after 12:30 PM on Sunday, and Kiki Sushi opens up at 5:00 PM.
And, and all the other ones said yes, they're fine?
The other one said yes to the event, staff needs to go back and confirm if they're aware of the frequency of the event. You know, being that it'd be, you know, that one Sunday each month through December. They said yes to the event, but I'm not sure the applicant actually communicated the frequency of the event.
So it's once a month?
It's once a month, yes.
When, when is this slated to start, again, is it August?
Is it once a month or every Sunday?
Every Sunday, every Sunday, every Sunday through December.
Oh, it's every Sunday?
Yes, it's not once a month, yeah.
This is slated to start on August 10th will be the first one.
Okay. Is the mobilization on this very complicated?
To confirm, it's weekly every Sunday.
Is the mobilization for this event very complicated?
I mean, we would do the, the street closure early in the mornings. Not necessarily, no, we'll do.
Early in the mornings meaning an hour before 12, at 11, or?
We'll do the street closure likely around 6:00 AM, 5:00 AM in the morning.
No, that's, okay.
So you're cutting 73rd off basically in the middle?
Yep.
All day, so, I, I think, I'm going to propose that we table this item, if that's okay, and bring it back on the fifth, on that agenda. So I think if you can just, I, I'd like you to go back and talk to all those businesses, because I, I'm just surprised to hear that. I can imagine, you know, particularly one operator that has a fitness business there. Having, yeah, Alfredo knows who I'm referring to, having heartburn about that inventory being taken offline for the morning hours when they're open. So I think, let's just confirm that, you know, everyone understands what they signed yes to and if it's, there's still that kind of consensus, and I'm happy to give this a shot. For, you know, and see what happens, and we can always, we can always rescind the authorization if we run into some issues once we start, but let's make sure that everybody's on board before we take away all the available inventory for, you know, basically the entire of the business day on Sunday.
But the purpose of the resolution is to waiver the 15,000?
Yeah, but I'm not sure I want to waive the money unless, unless.
Yeah, yeah, but we haven't even spoken about waiving the money.
Oh, no, we haven't even spoken about that, but yeah, we have to approve the event, so any, any thoughts on the waiver request?
Commissioner Bonish?
I think that was already clear earlier today when we were talking about staffing.
Well, I agree, 15,000 is a third of the.
Well, but you know, it's emblematic of what you, what has happened across the board, guys. Don't let sticker shock stop you now.
Yeah, but I, I mean, yeah, yes, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, and the 15, it covers, what are we waiving, police or parking?
Portial police, parking.
Yeah.
We're not waiving police, we're waiving parking.
No, we're waiving the street closure.
Yeah.
Waiving the street closure and the MOT fees alone, that's it.
You're still charging parking and you're still charging police.
And what, I guess I would say, what are our costs to do that? To do the MOT and the, the street closure, like our actual cost, I don't know if you have this on hand, but.
Presumably they're offset by, by what the fees were rising.
You would think, but maybe it's not, maybe, maybe it's less?
So the MOT, I mean, I have it together, street closure MOT is 15,659.49, I would say that the MOT is probably about $2,000. Over 21, over 21 Sundays.
Okay.
And a difference of 13,000 is the street closure.
Okay. I mean, maybe go 50/50 with the guy, but.
Do we, do we, do we have, we, we don't have to approve the event, or we're just approving the waiver fees?
So you, you, this item before you strictly on the waiver of fees, the city manager will approve or deny the event.
Am I trying it? City man, to the mayor, sorry.
Sure, I know, you're recognized.
Already got slapped on the hand once.
You're all talking over each other, man, it's hard to follow.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I love you.
Brain fart, the.
Sorry, Chip.
You have the, you have the ability to rescind the use at will, correct?
Yes.
So all we're doing is?
The waiver.
The waiver, so Mayor, if, if you may, let's just try it, see how it goes, maybe a month or so. Have the mayor have eyes on it, let's, look, I'm always, you know, you guys understand, I always try to do different things. Especially in that area to see what works and what doesn't work, so there's no reason to stop now.
Well, it brings different people.
If we have Sundays, Commissioner Bonish, if Sundays are not something that's generating a lot of people in that area, maybe this will help, so, I, I mean, it's for the businesses in reality, I'm willing to.
Well, I, I think, I mean, let's be clear, it's, we, it's, it's really one business. It's driving traffic into their business, and that's fine, but I guess, my concern is not lost revenue or the waiver, yes, it's not ideal, happy to support it. But my concern is really the disruption required by closing the street from 6:00 AM till, you know, we demobilize, right? And everybody else on that street segment is paying tenant, and we've got, we've had a lot of sensitivities about parking rates and parking enforcement and, you know, people are not going to have people, be able to have people walk up to the business and park right in front. Right, for a substantial part of the day when there's no business activity being generated for the business that's going to have the event? But we're taking away business from all the other occupants on the street.
Sorry, yeah, you're right, so Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, of course.
Was Boiling Crab already okay with it, was meat, what's the, the Japanese place across the street?
Miyako, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing that gave me pause is that when I read the item, my impression was everybody knew that the street would be closed for the entirety of the day, and what I'm hearing from the director was that he's not sure whether people were generally supportive of the event hours, which are not in conflict with a lot of the operating businesses in that area. But they may not understand that there actually is a closure that's going to affect their operations earlier in the day. Am I, am I?
You got it, that's correct.
Okay.
So I think, I, I mean, I think, I'm happy to approve the waiver, but frank, more frank, I'm honestly more concerned about the event being approved if people aren't clear as to what the impacts are going to be to them, right? This is not, this is not, you know, I know we get complaints sometimes about the Halloween thing that we do on Sunset not serving those businesses, but that's a community-wide event, this is really, we're trying to help drive traffic to a street, but it's really going to benefit in large business, in large measure one business.
And we would, we would, based on that, certainly double down on ensuring that each business understands exactly, and I think equally, we, we should communicate to the promoter this sort of approval, but we'll check and see. So they don't incur too many costs in advance of, of a time period, I don't know, through some promotion or something. Wanted to let them know, hey, listen, this is something that we're going to check and see how it goes, just so they don't invest a lot of money potentially for an entire program all the way through December, if that's the case. So, if we're, and I told another business who said, if something's not working, is there an ability from the city to, to not, you know, authorize it further, and I said yes. But I, I think it's important to, to know what the businesses understand. Some of those businesses are not going to be open that day in that time.
No, I know, but that's my, I think the thing is that their street's closed from 6:00 AM, right, and you've got a gym or a restaurant that's open for lunch, right?
Yep.
I think they should know that that's potentially going to become an impact for them, so. Again, it's not, it's not that we can't choose to authorize the event either way, but I just, you know, want to understand people's general sentiment about the impacts, and in reading the item, it seems like they're all on board. You know, which gave me great comfort in saying yes to this, but when the director made his presentation, I got quite the opposite impression, so. I just ask that we confirm if there's a motion to approve either the item as presented or with some modification, I'll entertain it.
So let's defer it until next week?
Do you want to defer, do you want to, do you want to approve it?
Well, we can't, you just said you.
I would defer it until we can get.
So is there a motion to defer it August 5th?
Well, we can approve it, Mayor, and then let have, let.
Let's just defer it, let's just defer it so we don't give it, we don't send mixed signals to the applicant.
Yeah, so the business, once we know the businesses are okay every Sunday for 6:00 AM till the end, then, I mean, even though it's not up to us, it's up to the manager.
Knowing that, and fully understanding what you're concerned about, I mean, if you want to approve it with a very narrow and strict instruction that we should verify with every business that to ensure that they know what this is about, you know, we'll do that. If we find otherwise, we, I, I won't sign off on the permit until that is accomplished.
I'll make a motion to approve it with that modification.
Okay, with that direction, okay?
Well, what, the numbers, though, we keep skipping over the number.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not skipping over the number, who wants to, who wants to vote it up or down?
So.
Who wants to, we got a motion to approve it with the direction to the manager that they confirm that the businesses that, that signed off on this understand that there's going to be a hard closure on that street beginning at whatever hour. Is there a second for that, for that motion?
I would second it, Mayor, but I think you wanted to discuss something before we actually.
Sure, okay, but I just want to, I want to know there's a motion to discuss, so, okay, so we have a second on the motion for discussion. You and I want to discuss with the amount of the waiver.
Correct.
Okay, so, what do you propose?
Quentin, the 15,000, that's from now to December, from when it starts to December.
Yes, sir.
So do you, if you have it, do you have a breakdown per Sunday?
Yes, is just for street closure and MOT or the entire thing?
The, the entire thing on a Sunday, one Sunday.
$2,151.69.
Again, just clear, if we gave them a, if we gave them a waiver on, as requested, correct? Because they requested a much larger amount.
Yes.
They requested $26,000 and change.
Correct.
So there's about 21 or 22 Sundays between now and the end of the year.
Yeah.
I'll take, give them half?
So we, no, but, no, what they're recommending is a portion of what they requested. So Quentin, why don't you, Brock, why don't you break down what they asked for, what you're recommending, and?
So the total amount that the applicant requested was for waiver, $31,892.49. That's broke, that's broken down to, they want the street closure MOT fee, which is $15,659.49. They requested $6,300 in parking meter fees waived, and police department or police staff, $9,933. The total.
And that's, and that's police staffing the closure for the entirety of the time from 6:00 AM till they demobilize, okay? And again, why do we have to close the street for that duration?
Those bikes, they're expecting about 75 guests.
So the, so the bikes start arriving well before the event starts?
No, the bikes are going to start arriving probably around 12:30, 1 o'clock when the event starts. There will be no entertainment outside, it's just for the bikes, but in order to have those parking.
Space is clear.
We usually have to block them early in the morning in order to do that.
Anybody have any suggestions?
And when you recommended what by way of a waiver?
Staff only recommended street closure and MOT for waiver.
Which was?
Which is $15,659.49.
So roughly 50% of the, of the costs.
Right. We requested, or I'm requesting that they pay the police, that they pay for parking, as well as the administrative and application fee.
Okay, so the motion is to approve a waiver at roughly 50% of the costs, of the applicant's requested costs?
And I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you want to modify in any way or propose a modification?
I think, I think I said the question wrong the first time, so our costs, our labor costs to do the MOT, what, that entails putting some barricades up?
Yeah.
Having people there for the whole day? Our labor cost for that is 2,000 for one.
Plus the police staffing.
No, 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 police staffing, we're not doing.
Our, our labor cost for the, just the street closure and the MOT?
Yes.
One event is $745.
That's what I'm willing to.
If you times that over 21, that makes up the $15,659.
It's 21 Sundays between now and the end of the year, that's why it gets that expensive.
Obviously, we're doing it per week, per, per that, so every Sunday.
Is it totally that?
Correlated.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second, let's, let's vote that motion up or down, unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. We're voting on the, on authorizing the waiver as presented by staff, which is 50% of the amount that the applicant requested.
Who seconded?
We had, we had a motion by Commissioner Corey and a second by Commissioner Kaye, is my recollection, Madam Clerk.
With, with direction to.
With the, with direction, with direction to staff to not authorize the event in the event, if there's not consensus from the neighboring owners.
So it's 745, I'm breaking it to the simplest number, 700, it's our labor cost of $745 per Sunday.
Times 21, yeah.
Times 20, times 21, if it gets to 21.
It's just per week.
So we'll try it out a couple of weeks. But we're still, get parking and we still get.
Police.
Police. So overcharge police.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonish?
No.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
No.
Passes three two.
Thanks, okay, let's move on to item, let's take item 11.
Item 11, a resolution of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, declaring as required by Section 200.065 Florida statutes, the city's proposed millage rate rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.065, Rowan One Florida statutes and the date, time, place at which the first and second public budget hearings will be held to consider the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget for fiscal year 25, 2025, 2026, directing the city manager and city clerk to transmit and file this resolution with the Miami-Dade County Property Appraiser, authorizing the city manager to change budget hearing dates if needed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Manager, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. While the CFO present on this item, this is the proposed millage rate for your consideration, which is 3.950. But I'll let the CFO present the item and discuss rollback rake and those other things that have to be announced at the meeting.
Okay, so we'll deal with the formalities only, correct? Because we already had our budget presentation earlier today, correct?
I would much desire that.
Yes, we would, we would appreciate that as well, so.
I want to see the budget presentation.
No, please, oh, yes, okay. Funny man on the right. Mr. Riverall, when you're ready.
Good evening again, as mentioned by the city manager, this keeps the millage flat. Just the formalities as stated in the resolution. The rollback rate as computed pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statute is 3.6490, which. which is three point six four nine zero per one thousand of assessed property within the city. The proposed mileage rate is eight point two five percent higher than the rollback rate. So what we're setting or what we're advising the property appraisers office tonight or tomorrow, when I send it, is advising them we're expecting to keep it flat and that's what will be advertised on the trim notices to the property owners of South Miami. And with that, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, anything else we need to add for the record? Okay, is there a motion on the item or any discussion before we entertain a motion?
I'll move the motion, Mayor.
Second it.
Move a motion by Commissioner Caie and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Caie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five, zero.
Thank you. If you can read item twelve for the record, please.
Item twelve, in the ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, amending section twenty dash eight point six parking of Article Eight Transit Supported Development District, T S D D of the Land Development Code to revise regulations related to parking within the T S D D.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item is a public hearing item. So Mr., oh my gosh, Mark, I apologize, I just blanked on, Mr. Alvarez, you are recognized.
Mark Alvarez Cordino Group, representing City South Miami Planning Staff.
Thank you. And just, and just for, just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, we have seen this presentation before, correct?
Yes, you have.
We are re-adopting the same ordinance that we adopted on, more or less on what date?
There is one change to it.
Okay.
Um, which I can draw your attention to.
Please, if you can just address the change, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. The last change was to put the aisle sizes, the parking aisle size back to twenty-one feet.
Correct.
The rest is the same. And the bicycle, what, the bicycle? Yes. Language?
Twenty-one or twenty, twenty-two feet, right? It's wider.
Increase to twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet, okay.
That's right.
No problem.
Yeah, and then there was a, there was a provision added regarding-
Bicycle, bicycle parking, which is capped at five percent of the required parking by way of a reduction?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Colleagues, any questions on the changes? Okay.
I'm sorry, was that state mandated, the five percent, or is that something?
No, that's something that we've added as an incentive where you can replace one parking space with six bicycle parking spaces. You can tell me whether you think that's wise or not, but it's a ca, it, it's capped at no more than five percent of the required parking, so the impact is somewhat negligible.
Is that something we've seen throughout?
It happens in other jurisdictions, you know?
Yeah, this was based on, yeah, this was informed by other jurisdictions that, that it came in, uh, there was a proposal that came in with, with other changes. And Mark and I looked at it and said, that's not a bad idea. It happens in many other jurisdictions, urbanized jurisdictions. So that, that's why we felt it was appropriate here. But, but that's obviously subject to your policy determination.
We could discuss it if you guys want. Yeah, of course, please say what?
I, I think that's kinda stupid. I mean, I, I ride bike, I, I do. I crash into my bike every day in my garage.
Commissioner's basically giving people a five percent parking reduction.
Yeah.
So, I mean, depends how you feel about it. So they just gotta add a nominal amount of spaces.
All right, that's all I gotta say.
Still have an ugly sweater.
Further comments, oh my gosh, okay, it's getting ugly here. Okay, can I get, can I get, this is a public hearing item. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address this commission on item twelve, which is the adoption of some amendments to the Transit Supportive Development District ordinance, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one in the chamber, Madam Clerk, and no one online, correct? We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion either as presented or recommending a modification? She moves it.
I'll second it as is.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Bonich and a second by Commissioner Caie to adopt the item as presented. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Caie? Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes, the stupid it all. Item fourteen, please, if you can read in the record.
Item fourteen, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, relating to the city's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget authorizing an increase of one hundred thousand dollars appropriation for the Art and Public Places Fund, allocating such increase to expenditure line item one two two dash one seven nine zero dash five one nine dash thirty-four fifty contractual services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, if you wanna quickly explain this?
Yeah, Mayor, there's a, the second reading, as we had previously described, we're basically appropriating the funds from the Art and Public Places Trust. So we can expend those funds. And it's a portion of, it's a hundred thousand dollars. The, previously we discussed, I think it's about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar balance on the Art and Public Places, so we're appropriating a hundred towards this project. In two days, it's gonna go before the Art and Public Places Committee for their review. It'll be the second meeting of this committee. The first one was solely to review the Avalon Bay project, Art and Public Places. This meeting is gonna review the second, we'll have a second conversation on Avalon Bay. And we'll also be seeing two options that have been put forward for them to consider. One is one that this committee, that this commission saw some time ago, which is more of the vegetative jungle-like. There was a second proposal that's part of Mihata's artwork, which is something that Commissioner Bonich and I had looked at, which is sort of modeled after the famous Menina art piece from the sixteen hundreds, sixteen fifty-two, I think it is. So those have been put on an image-
Just Savalaskis and Brado.
Yes, sir.
Yes, very nice.
You remember your art history, yeah.
Not really, I just remembered seeing it in the museum a month ago.
Yeah. I actually saw it recently, I stood in front of the painting. So it was kinda, kinda interesting to stand in the museum at Prado Museum in Madrid. So both of those are going before the committee for some feedback. And we shared that calendar invite for any of you that may wanna participate virtually for that meeting. So this appropriates those funds. Once we get that feedback from the committee and we move forward, then we have the ability to expend the funds in the project.
Okay, questions for the manager? I, I only have a comment, which is, I know I sent the question to you all about why we adopt our budget via ordinance. Because it makes changing it very difficult for something as minor as this. So if we can discuss that and revisit how we do business here on this item. I know Mr. Riverall has an opinion, so maybe myself, you and the, and the City Attorney can get together and discuss it, because it just seems overly cumbersome that we have two hearings to move a hundred thousand dollars. So anyhow, just my commentary on the item. With that, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bonich and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, please call the, oh, please call the roll. Oh, my apologies, this is a public hearing item. If there's anyone who'd like to address this commission regarding an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars into the Art and Public Places Fund, we invite you to address this commission. Seeing no one in the chamber and no one online, we will close the public hearing. I feel like I'm reading a disclaimer on an ad. Madam Clerk, if you can now, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Caie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five, zero.
Thank you. If you can read item fifteen, please.
Item fifteen, ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, relating to the South Miami Pension Plan, by amending chapter sixteen pensions specifically section sixteen dash fourteen pension benefits and retirement date. Section sixteen dash fifteen disability benefits. Section sixteen dash sixteen, death of a participant. Section sixteen dash twenty-one purchase of credited services. And section sixteen dash thirty-two, City of South Miami Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, created in order to facilitate the pension-related provisions of the collective bargaining agreement between the city and a fraternal order of police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, anything need to be addressed on this item?
No, Mayor, a second reading. We previously mentioned that this was to provide some of the contractual items that we had agreed to and allow that through the one eighty-five funds that are received from the state for, and, and enhance and provide benefits that could be purchased through the share plan. So these are four minimum benefits that are, they're listed in your, and nothing's changed from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Colleagues, any questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, let's open up a public hearing. If any member of the public would like to address this commission, item fifteen, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one in the chamber and no one online, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on item fifteen?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bonich, a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Caie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five, zero.
Thank you, if you can read item sixteen for the record, please.
Item sixteen, in the ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, accepting the evaluation and appraisal report of the city's adopted comprehensive plan pursuant to section one six three point three one nine one Florida statutes, amending the goals, objectives and policies of the city's comprehensive plan in accordance with the evaluation and appraisal report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we have Mr. Alvarez and a City Attorney here to answer questions. This is an item we've previously adopted. You've probably been briefed on the transmittal issues that we experienced.
It's, it's first reading.
First reading.
This one's first reading.
No, but we, we've previously adopted this year, correct?
No, you, no, that you're adopting the year tonight. Approving it on first reading.
Approving it on first reading. Did we not approve it before?
No, no, you haven't seen it yet.
Oh, look at that, okay. Would anyone like a presentation on this item?
Who's presenting?
Mr. Alvarez. Do you have any questions? Do you want a presentation? I'm looking around, I've seen, no, blank faces, so I'm assuming that is, we are clear. Mr. Alvarez, anything you wanna add for the record very quickly? Nothing? Okay. Seeing no questions, we will open up this item for public hearing again. Seeing no one in the chamber and no one online, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on item sixteen?
I move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, by Vice Mayor Corey and a second by Commissioner Caie. Mr. City Attorney, before we act, anything else we need to do by way of formalities before we adopt the item?
Nope, you held the public hearing.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Caie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes five, zero, first reading.
Thank you. First reading ordinance, we have two. Madam Clerk, if you could read seventeen to the record, please.
Item seventeen, in the ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, amending Article Three zoning regulations, section twenty dash three point six, supplemental regulations of the Land Development Code relating to accessory storage, recreation vehicles and single-family residential properties.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, any questions of the manager or City Attorney regarding item seventeen?
Yep, what's the gist of it finally?
Yeah, can we get the summary on the changes?
Basically, I believe it reads almost exactly like the boat storage ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, in its entirety.
It, it has a registration requirement, it has limitations as to where you can park. This was all based on your, your input-
You have to have the hatch.
At first reading.
The distances from the property, just the budding property line and screening requirements are the same as the boat ordinance. I think the only difference is that we do permit guest-
Right.
Vehicle storage in your front yard or whatever, however we define that area. For a period of fourteen days.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that's, and-
That's the one distinction between this and the boat ordinance.
Right.
So you still have, through the mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Do you, so you still have to get, so the, the boat ordinance, you could actually just have a grandfather? And I think it was new boats needed to be registered, is that what it was?
Correct, this is a little bit different, this is, this is, everybody's gotta-
Everybody's gotta register.
And everybody's gotta, gotta comply with the rules. There's no grandfathering.
What are the penalties?
You're subject to code enforcement.
Code violation.
Code violation.
Is there, but is there a daughter figure attached to that?
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's the same schedule as any other code enforcement violation. So you're gonna be adjudicated guilty, given time to comply, and then fine penalties incurred thereafter.
What's the point of registering the RV, just?
So that we know that that, so that our code enforcement knows that that RV is supposed to be there. If, if the RV is, so the only, the only sticky part of the ointment, well-
Yeah, I, I think the easy answer is we have the, one of the parts of this ordinance is that the RV has to be registered to the owner and the registration just makes that easier. Because otherwise, we don't wanna have to have our code enforcement, excuse me, code enforcement officers having to check the license plate and do those kind of searches. So since we do require ownership of the RV and the home, that's really what the registration is for.
Did we do that before?
On boats?
No, RVs.
Uh, no.
We don't have any, we don't have any on RVs, that's why we're adopting them.
But I think-
You're recognized, sir, yeah.
I think part of this is that if they're not registered, then we can assume maybe they're guests and they can be there for fourteen days, or they have to register if they're gonna have somebody there for like-
So there's, so there's two parts. One is the registration related to the, the regular storage of an RV, which has to be in your side or your yard. A certain, I think it's five feet from any property boundary.
Right.
And subject to whatever screening requirements depending on the height of the vehicle, right? If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, going off memory.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
And then we do allow, unlike the boat ordinance, we, we do require registration of all vehicles here, there's no grandfathering, you have to comply with the rules. But if you do wanna have a guest come and park in your front yard, they can do that for fourteen days. There is no registration requirement in the draft that's presented.
That's correct.
I would, I would suggest that if we're gonna allow this at all, which I think might be a bad idea, we should require them to get a guest permit so that they, we know the date at which the vehicle came on the property and we can actually, you know, make the durational requirement meaningful. Now that, then, I think on the other, as a, as a, as a related comment, I would add that we should probably add a limitation on the number of guest permits we allow for that property for vehicle storage in the front yard.
Yeah, yeah, so one thought is if, we already limit every fourteen days, we could say every fourteen days, fourteen days over the course of X time.
Six months or a calendar year or whatever. Again, I, I would tell you, you're making, we're making more work for ourselves by allowing guests to park in someone's front yard.
But at the same time, people who, who like have family that travels in RVs, which is-
Yeah, but they're using-
For whatever reason, it's more common than I ever would-
It's very popular.
So I'm like, okay, my mom and my dad travel the world in their RV and they come to visit. So, yeah, they can only come for two weeks, you know, once a year or whatever, and park in my front yard. Even though they probably would never because there's no place for them- Even though they probably would never, because there's no place for them.
To put, connect to water, correct.
Water, so it becomes almost a non-issue, but you.
So that was exactly my point, so I'm wondering whether it's worth even having a rule, when likely they're going to be there for a couple of days and move on? As opposed to having a blanket prohibition, if it becomes a problem and someone reports it, they just can't be there and we can enforce it from there, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, my thought was less regulation, because the practical situation is you've got to empty out your toilets and get fresh water, et cetera. And electricity can maybe connect electricity in someone's front yard for a while, but you've got to, systems require processing. But I'm open to either scheme, I think if we're going to allow for it, we should limit the duration to a number of total days a year and require people to, you know, make sure that they have a permit so that we can enforce the time period. That's the only modification I would propose to the ordinance, so.
I would do, I would do a time limit, and in regards to like the bathroom and all that, if they have to empty it, they could just use the house and leave the RV there. What are you going to tell your parents, you can't come inside?
I was just saying, they're probably unlikely to get the guest permit, though, right?
Well, then in that case, we have, the problem is, how do we know the day they arrived?
Right.
Unless we ask them to register, so we could have a 14-day limit.
Yeah.
But if there's no confirmation of the day they arrived, other than someone's, you know, visual reporting of it, right? We can't enforce the durational period.
But that's just, there's no way.
Yeah.
We're working on an honor system here, people.
We didn't want boats in front yards, right? The general disposition of the board was, we didn't want boats in front yards. I would say, we don't want recreational vehicles in front yards, whether they're owned by the owner or a guest, right? I think the cleaner thing would be to remove the guest language and strike that, strike any placement in the front yard.
I'm fine with that, too.
If they're there for a day or two, you know.
The ordinance says that would be parking, one day is parking, storage goes beyond the day, so we still would allow parking.
So.
I said just take it all out.
Nothing is allowing anything in the front yard. The guest has to comply with the requirements of this section.
I thought the guest could park in the front yard, by my reading of the ordinance.
No, 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 if the guest is parked in the right-of-way, then he's subject to whatever right-of-way rules there are. But in, on the actual front yard, in that person's driveway, or pulling up, that's not what this says. They will, shall be subject to all the requirements of this section.
Okay.
So the intent was, you can, the whole idea was, if you've got, the RV has to be registered to the owner of the property. And if it's not, then is it, the question is, is that going to be a per se violation? Or are we going to provide some?
It's a per se, it should be a per se violation.
Then we remove all references to guests.
That's cleaner, I would just do that.
Thank you.
And it's less work for our staff.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I need a motion, yeah.
All right, I move it.
I move it how?
Like we just said.
With the modification.
Of no guests.
Striking guest.
Just the attorney, you clear, you want us to read it for the record? So it's a motion to adopt with what, with the modification being?
Striking the, any reference to guests, specifically lines 97 through 101.
97 through 101, which are not numbered in the package, but that's okay.
Sorry for that.
Really quick, before we make the, so in the case, which is, that brought all this to light, that person's either going to have to register the RV to her, or she, they're going to have to move the RV out.
That's correct.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, they have a tenant, too, right? If they're a tenant, they have to show.
There's no, we're not allowing, by the way, I don't think we ever allowed for a vehicle to be rented to a tenant.
No.
So you can't, the vehicle always had to be registered to the property owner. So that was, I think in the specific case that we talked about before, that was part and parcel of the violation, correct?
We're.
Yeah.
Hang on, how we're, an occupant tenant of the home.
Yeah, that's right.
Can have, can have an RV. It's either, it's either the owner or a documented occupant tenant.
Okay.
That's the way, that's the way we have presented, if you don't want that to be the case, we need to change that, so.
So it's not just the homeowner? It could be the kid, or the son, or the daughter.
No, they've got to be tenants, they have to be leasing.
Like a tenant of the house, not of the property, like a tenant of.
Does it say that? Does it say the tenant of the principal structure?
We will add that, to make it clear, to make it clear.
Do we want, do we, do we want to allow that, because we do not allow that in the case of boat storage, correct?
Correct.
So if I'm a, if I'm a renter of a home and I have a lease for the principal structure.
You would have an.
I cannot register my boat and store it in the side yard.
Oh, that's, no, I mean, if you're a tenant and you're, I mean, if you're leasing the house for a year.
No, my, that's right, but my point is, again, we wanted.
It needs to be the same.
We wanted to treat, I think the one that Commissioner Gaya, which I think was a good one, we wanted to treat both parties in an equivalent fashion.
Right.
So I'm just highlighting the fact that we do not allow, to my recollection, boats to be stored by tenants inside yards. I think it required, had to be registered to the owner of the property. Both in case of the unit, the boat that was being grandfathered, and any future boat that was located on the property.
It has to be connected to the current owner of the property, you're absolutely right.
So do we want to extend this benefit to renters when we don't do that in the case of boats, so?
I think we should.
Stay the same?
Keep it all the same.
Okay, so you've made a motion, and there's a second. Do you want to accept the modification to a limit?
Yes, please.
To any tenant occupants?
I want it to read the same as the boat one does, so that it is limited to the owner of the property.
Okay, is the second or accept?
The one seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, we now have a second with the modification, as revised, yes.
Sorry, one of the complications on the owner only is the owner's family, so we do have to make the language so that it's.
Anyone untitled, that's it, so if you're not untitled for the property, you're out of luck. That's how we, that's how we have it drafted for the boat ordinance, so.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So if, in your house, your son or has a.
So for example, if I, so if I, if I am the principal, so right now, if you own a boat, you have a boat in your side yard, it's got to be registered to someone who's untitled for the home, that's who can store a boat. In the side yard, the boat cannot be any larger than, I think, 40 feet is my recollection. If you, now we have a case, we have boats in the front yard, which is a distinction here, because that's a condition that exists today, right? They also have to be registered to the principal property owner, listed untitled. We do not make provision for my son Lucas to have his own personal watercraft in the backyard, registered to him personally, so.
That was my question, so.
I did that with my parents.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying.
It may not happen, but, you know.
We need to extend the meeting.
Can I motion to extend for 15 minutes?
I move to extend.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry about that.
Without opposition, show the motion, show the meeting extended to 11:15. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bonich with the following modifications, right? Not allow, not allow guest storage of RVs, and also require that only owners of the property can have a registered RV on the property. And we have a second by Commissioner Rodriguez to that motion. Any further comments or discussion? We'll get another crack at this, so Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please, thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Yes, Commissioner Gaya?
No.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Passes 41 on first.
Okay, thank you. Item 18, please.
Item 18, in the ordinance of the Mayor City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida amending Article 2 Departments of Chapter 2 Administration and City Government of the City Code to provide for the establishment of city departments annually in the adopted budget ordinance together with establishment of duties and functions of each city department to clarify that charter officers and their staff are not departments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bonich, and a second by Vice Mayor Corey, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Gaya?
Yes, he said yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item pass 650.
Without, I see no further business before this board, we stand adjourned, thank you.
I had Commissioner remark to.
You forgot.